Scott's over there, Paul's over there. Amy is over there. Julia's on the center of the screen, she's probably super serious.
There we go.
Board members, please come to the podium.
That is the biggest laptop I've ever seen. Yeah, good for mine, but it must weigh twenty pounds.
The boardwork session. The boardwork session for January 22nd, 2019 is called to order. Can we please have members of the audience take their seats?
Not to mention board members.
Not to mention board members. Tonight, we'll be talking about the Talented and Gifted Plan. We'll get a middle school update on Oakley Green, Harriet Tubman, Roseway Heights, and Lent, and then a business agenda. We will be, for the business agenda, we will be convening as a regular meeting at the end of this work session. So Superintendent Guerrero, do you want to lead the discussion of the Talented and Gifted Plan?
I'm going to call up our deputy superintendent, who I think is introducing staff, who's speaking on the topic this evening. Where's Dr. Curtis? Oh, we'll just have Aurora Terry come up.
Hello, Board. Thank you for having me here this evening. And Linda Smith, our tag director, is also here to answer questions. And we also have our tag TOSSAs in the audience as well, as our resident experts. So Linda's also new to the district. She started in September, and she comes also from Texas. Linda was a principal of a Tag Magnet Middle School and also a Tag Magnet Elementary School, both IB schools. And when she was a principal for close to fifteen years, and her latest role was as a principal mentor. And she does a lot of work with the International Bach Gloria Organization.
Welcome.
Thank you. And we're here this evening to discuss the tag plan. First, we have some information about the Division 22 compliance. I know this came up last week in discussion. And for 2018, we did a self-report that we were out of compliance in the area of tag. And the corrective action required of us was an initial professional development. So the area that we are out of compliance was in the instruction provided, "To identified students shall be designed to accommodate their assessed levels of learning and accelerated rates of learning." And so the first step, we recognize that this is a process, and it will take a while for this to have some accountability across all the schools. But the first step was a training. So we, in November, we trained all of the tag facilitators. So every campus has a tag, a designated tag facilitator. And we have monthly meetings with the tag facilitators. So we trained the tag facilitators in November. And principals started training on one of their Tuesdays with professional development with their staff through December and January. And so we are, I would say, probably at eighty percent. We're waiting for a few more schools. And actually, today, I know some schools completed the professional development today with their teachers, and we have other schools scheduled for next Tuesday. So by next week, we should be complete with this training. And so with the completion of that training, we will be in compliance with the corrective action. So because we did state that we were out of compliance, we had to suggest a corrected action to ODE, and that action was the professional development. So we will complete that compliance piece once all of our schools finish the training for their teachers. And I also want to state that that is the first of several. We also recognize that we can't only have one training and then assume everybody is equipped with the knowledge and skills to meet the needs of all their students. So we do have a plan to continue professional development moving forward with both our tag facilitators, our teachers, as well as administrators moving forward. And so that leads us into our tag goals. So as we, and you should have the packets. And so in your packet.
Are we going to power through and do questions at the end?
Oh, sorry.
Which is fine, I just want to know. It'd probably be better because we tend to.
Okay, so let's try to get through the presentation and hold questions unless there's something burning.
Okay, great. So it is a relatively short presentation, as we focused on the goals that we have moving forward. The full tag plan is in the packet. It's, I don't think they're numbered, but it's right after the TAGAC Annual Review. In your packet is the action plan. So pulled from that are our goals. So one of our goals is to improve the tag identification process. So in looking at the demographics of our students and other historical data, we recognize that we are not capturing our historically underserved students. And one of the things that we'd like to look at is currently, once students meet certain qualifying thresholds, we then send home a notice to families stating, "You're qualified, apply here." And so we'd like to look at reversing that. So you're qualified, we'll start providing services unless you'd like to opt out of those services. So that's something that we would like to look into, is eliminating some of the barriers that come in place when, through the mail, through parents having to complete applications, additional work sample collections from teachers. So looking at how we can ensure more students are identified and how we can automate services to those students. So that's our first goal. The next goal is around professional development. So I did speak to that, so I can answer questions if you have those at the end. But really, those are the big focus points would be the tag facilitators, teachers, and administrators, as well as our TOSSAs, who are providing the supports. And this also kind of bleeds into the curriculum development. So as we're creating our core curriculum for the district and working hard to ensure that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum across all of our campuses, we would like to ensure that built into those unit planners and available for every teacher is opportunities for extension activities, extension projects, ideas of what to do when students need accelerated learning opportunities. So building that into our core curriculum. And so that will also require some professional development for the creators of our core curriculum. So the people that are in those committees, working with them to ensure that we have some great ideas built into our Common Core documents. The next one is looking at formative assessment to inform instruction. So one of the opportunities that we have with the MAP assessment is that the MAP assessment allows for us to have data on how students are doing in the moment. And there's some, the data is aligned to Common Core standards. It also gives us insight into skills that students are ready to develop. So this could be powerful information for teachers, for families, and for meeting the needs of students in the moment. So really looking at how we can use formative assessment to help inform our instruction. And then our fifth goal is to work on individual instructional plans. So I know last week at the board meeting, I heard our superintendent discussing how important it was to create opportunities for personalized learning goals for students. And so we'd really like to look at opportunities that we can ensure that our students have plans to meet their needs. So those are our five goals looking forward as a department. And then, and so that is the presentation essentially that we prepared, because we did have the document with the steps that we're planning to take to get there, the in-between from where we are now to achieving our goals. So we can be open for questions.
Thanks. Clear, clear goals. Questions about a couple of them. And this stems in part from me attending TAGAC meetings in the past, as they wrestled with some of these issues. First of all, the identification of historically underserved students. Do you feel like you have the tools to actually do that? You talked about, talked about the assessments for all second graders. Is that going to cut the mustard, especially for, say, students who English isn't their native language? Are these, are these assessments unbiased enough? Because every assessment is biased to some sort. Are they unbiased enough to cross all cultures?
Sure. So, so. One of the things that we really feel strongly about is that there have been, and as I heard through some of the visioning meeting today, is that barriers are an issue. And as we universally assess our second graders, as it stands now, a parent receives a card, and then the parent has to fill out a form, and they have to get it to the school. And so we felt like schools or children who are historically underserved, a lot of those families don't feel comfortable either filling out the form or not notified, or they don't get that information. And so we feel, by actually having that opportunity where a parent has to say, "No, I don't want tag services," and to actually qualify these children through the Naglari III, which is also a total nonverbal test. It doesn't have any analogies or anything, as the COGAT does, as it goes higher in the grade level. So we felt like this is a good opportunity to use that assessment, as well as the MAP assessments that we already have on this, in the district. So it's not a cost factor for us to, having to get another document to identify students.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Did you have a follow-up, Scott?
Oh, I've got a set of questions.
Do you want to follow up?
Oh, okay. But I do have a follow-up around this issue.
Well, following up on that, we know from our past experience with universal second grade testing that it does not identify any more historically underserved students than the other methods we've been using in years past. It doesn't move the percentages at all. So having a parent component on it is not going to change that. We need better tests.
So I guess, what portfolio, so is it just one measure? So we identify, you know, we always, what are the multiple measures that we're using? Because we're not going to find a perfect test, even a nonverbal test. All that means is that students can answer in a nonverbal manner, and that there's less in terms of oral instructions, but there's still communication that's involved. And they also tend to be more culturally, there's cultural implications on them that we may not think about. So obviously, there's a lot of problems with, no matter what test we use. But what are the other multiple measures that can kind of level the playing field for other sources of data for our kids that don't speak English, or have, you know, very little time and experience in the country, on and on?
Right. So one of the things that we also educate our, or give professional development on, at our tag facilitator meetings, is the use of the CLED document, which is the, it is a document that is, or a rating that a teacher or a building administrator can use, or a classroom teacher use with a child that's not necessarily based on a test. If they actually can see and can provide work samples, or a rating scale, or a parent gives input on that, we can look at that as well to identify students. And so that helps us in identifying some of the other students who might be historically underserved. At all levels, not just second grade, but at all levels.
Are there districts?
I'm sorry, what was the name of that?
CLED, C-L-E-D. Culturally.
Culturally, linguistically, and economically diverse teaching rating scale.
Are there districts who have figured this out, who you look at their TAG ID kids, and they're, they match the district demographics or are reasonably close to that? Or is everybody struggling with this? I'm seeing a parent.
I'm actually a TAG TOSSA.
A TAG TOSSA, sorry. I've seen somebody in the audience going, yeah, everybody's struggling with it.
So unfortunately, there aren't a better test.
It's not about the test.
That's their, for the assessment piece that we use, and as mentioned, are these the best choices? And that's something we struggle with every day, and across the country. So we aren't allowed to identify on one piece alone, a test score, for example, as they were saying. And so we have to look at all the other pieces of work, evidence. It could be observational, it could be assignments from the classroom, it could be other assessment pieces. So it does become more of a portfolio-type identification process. And actually, we are making some progress in identifying more historically underserved students. So we're getting there slowly but surely, but we're stumped by the whole assessment
Just to, just to follow up on the CLED or something like that, I mean, so when there's a rating scale where it's teachers that may not be very prepared in working with diverse learners, might miss many of the signs, obviously. So I'm sure that's something that, you know, would make a good piece to follow up, is how then we prepare teachers to look kind of outside the box of what exceptional learners bring and how they might demonstrate, such as, you know, acceleration of learning English, what they see, quick language learning. Anyway, it's just another source that obviously we will have to take a lot of care of, because it's still a measure that has some bias.
So I remember when I was in elementary school, the TAG program, the kids would leave their regularly scheduled class to go into a TAG classroom. Is that still the case for most elementary schools? Or, okay, or like, when, like, do they, do the TAG kids get together at some point during the class day? No?
So there are some, there are some instances where there's like a walk-to-Mac program, where they go to access, they do the walk-to-Mac.
Access has it, and nobody else has.
Okay. So there are, within the classroom, there, depending upon the schools, a lot of our schools have a lot of TAG students in their classrooms. A lot have a lower population, so it might be a little tougher for them to be with their peers. But I know that, and I can't speak specifically to which school directly at this point in my tenure in the district, but I know that I have heard, and I need to identify those places, where if there's only a couple or a handful of those students, how are they at the school level being with peers to receive?
Okay, so they're.
Or to collaborate.
Right, okay. So the, like, teachers and educators are catering to both TAG students and non-TAG students?
In the classroom.
In the, okay. And so that includes like different curriculum, like adjusted curriculum and advanced?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Also on identification, do we have any evidence that SBACK is a valid way to determine TAG status?
I know that that is the measure that we used, and that's where it is today. So I've not researched any other test at this point on the state level. We give that test, so that's a test that we give, we're looking to use additional measures that we have at the district level, instead of purchasing different assessments. But again, we also, it's not just the SBACK, it would be other identifiers. It would be a second one. It could be student work, it could be grades, it could be a MAP assessment score, lots of other areas, not just one indicator.
As you had mentioned that before, and I was also going to add, that I've heard from quite a few parents who are being told that, no, the SBACK is the only thing that will be used for determining TAG status after second grade. And I think that if that is not true, then doing some professional development around that would be a very good idea.
I'm kind of curious, one, I'm glad you're sending out a letter that's an opt-in rather than opt-out, but why even offer an opt-out? If, if my child was, you know, reasonably bright and got an extension for, you know, why, why would you ask my permission to do that? Why wouldn't you just do it?
I would say on that same score, you know, how is talented and gifted any different from the differentiation that we expect for every single one of our students?
So the opt-out thing is state law. Some of these things are state OARs and state law that are surround how we have to do this.
Why?
Because. So is your question, is your question, why can parents opt out of having their students tested, or why can the, parents have their students opt out of TAG?
Opt, opt out of TAG.
Receiving the services.
So we, this, I mean, I'm not advocating for this, but there's a whole host of things that people advocate, that parents be allowed to opt out. Again, I'm not necessarily in that group, but there is, we allow, and I think board members have actively advocated people being allowed to opt out of different testing. So it might fall in that same category. I'm not saying I'm advocating for it, but I'm just saying it probably fall in that category. So if we're saying you don't have to take SBACK, but you have to, you have to do, have a TAG test, it's not entirely consistent.
I'm not talking about the test.
I don't know that we're asking permission around a TAG assessment either. We're just doing it.
No, we aren't.
It's about receiving the services. Great.
But that's the test that everyone takes, though, right? And then based on that, or based on that and other factors, it goes to TAG or not?
Can I say?
Yeah, and let's leave measles out of this. Go ahead.
I'm not for measles either. So the five goals that are at the beginning, is it, is it the right process to think that you then go to page 10, where you have a list of bullet points with a series of activities? Are those the activities that marry to each of the goals? So if you were going to, if you were going to map, here's the goal, and then here's how we think we're going to get there, is the how we're going to get there, those, all the bullet points?
Yes, yes.
And if you, if we did all those bullet points, each of those years, we'd be meeting all five of these goals?
That is what we want.
So that, that, that's the.
It's a lot, it's a lot of, like you say, activities, but if you were to chunk them, you would see that they do fit into those five goals. And by successfully doing those things, we feel like, over a span of time, that we would be able to accomplish or be very close to those. We're at a very, very granular level at this point, and so we're building up. And so I think with those activities, and, you know, combining, combining them with the goals that are set here, that we can get there, get very, very close in the next three years.
So just thinking about that, one thing might be to do, so that the community could actually see a progression. One of my frustrations is, for example, if we are out of compliance with Division 22, which I don't think is our standard, it should be higher than that. But if we said, we're trying to deliver on goal number one, to separate out the bullet points of, these are the things that deliver on goal number one, then goal number two by year, so that you can actually see the activities.
Yep.
And then by extension, whether we actually create a scorecard, so whether we actually did it. Because if these are the activities that get us to achieving the goals, it seems we should sort of call out which, how to match, match them, so it doesn't just seem like a random set of activities.
Right.
And so that, if some of them have resource requests related to them, or a time, or capacity, or expertise, that we identify that on the front end in the budget, as part of the budget process, or in our strategic planning process, so that we know that we need to resource them in order to make it happen.
Yeah.
And then what, I guess the last thing would be, like, what is it that you need from the board, and, from us versus the staff, in order to.
Right.
Accomplish this?
Okay. That's, I just want to note, that's a subset of a broader conversation that we had when Deputy Superintendent Curtis gave the report on Division 22, where we asked for some connection in the budget process between those deficiencies and plans to address them, and, in the same breath, what resources are needed, so that we're not just, just guessing in the budget process, or just aggregating those needs with others. So I think, hopefully, that was duly noted, and it'll come through for TAG and other issues.
And to me, it's a bigger conversation around our whole, as we work toward a strategic plan, is to have those goals clear, and what are, you know, we could, it's an easy thing to put on the web, of where are we in terms of accomplishing each of our SEPC goals, action steps kind of things. And that brings me back in terms of an accountability piece, both around quality control, around the TAG facilitators, and you heard a little bit of that earlier tonight, and around the individual plans. As a parent, how do I know? And, and one of the little blue stickies up there from the TAG session was differentiation is more than a worksheet. So around the whole curriculum, what's, what's the accountability piece? How do we, how do we know it's happening consistently across the district? And that was another of the blue stickies of, you know, it sort of depends on your principal and your teacher, and what year it is, and if it's an even year or an odd year, in terms of the quality of services you get. So how's, how's that work? Who's, is the principal overseeing that TAG facilitator at each school?
Currently, yes. I think that that's definitely, and that came up in this evening's conversation, is that I think it would be important for us to look at the roles and the responsibilities of the TAG facilitators, and, and how those are chosen by the school, and making sure that it's an opt-in, and someone who really is excited and wants that role on the campus, and then our TAG department working with those people for professional development, and to give them the support they need on the campus. But yes, it is a campus person at this point in time who does report to the principal.
We're also having conversations around when the training of, of the TAG facilitators and administrators moving forward. What are some look-for's that when principals are walking through? What are some look-for's that when principals are walking through the classrooms, and coaching teachers, and that they have to look for's to go ahead and say, yes, we see some of these things happening, coaching up those teachers that may not be aware, or need that extra support, and then providing that support. But really giving them a concrete list of the kinds of things that they could be looking for once they're in the classrooms.
Many moons ago, our superintendent talked about, well, there's lots of types of giftedness. I know we're, like in a lot of areas, we're working on very foundational things here, and really around subspecific academics. How do we build that out to other, other kinds of, I'm really good at limericks, but I'm not suggesting that would be part of it, but-
As to your earlier question, Director Bailey, is that, you know, there is guidance from the US DOE, but every state plays tag services differently, right? In some states, there's mandates for services, and others there aren't. In some states, they're identifying across a range of areas, in the way that DOE encourages, you know, school districts to think of. I think what you're hearing here tonight, or what we know, has been an important foundational step, like these five goals, is to, you know, build organizational understanding and capacity, you know, some essential first steps around identification, around professional development, around facilitators, around our school principals being on board, making sure that we start to weave in and integrate these services and a delivery model in schools' improvement plans or cap plans. So these are first steps, and by no means, what I appreciated about the comment earlier is that you want to see a roadmap over multiple years. Okay, if we're gonna work on these five things now, and we'll have to keep coming back to them, what are the next five steps they're gonna take, right? And, you know, we have our stakeholders, our Tag Act, others who have been very patient with us, you know, with, we have some new leadership capacity here, who can, you know, as you're starting to see a little bit of evidence here, begin to think about all of these related issues a little bit more carefully. I think when we don't look across all the other categories of giftedness, you might not get the kind of diversity that's represented, representative of the demographic in our district. So, so we want to be sensitive to that, and, you know, you know, what are the assessments for creativity, right? That's something that states and school districts kind of struggle with, right? Is it a music audition, is it a presentation, is it a dance performance? There's categories for leadership, and gifted and talented, so how are we assessing student leadership and voice, right? So there's lots of exciting frontier areas, where we really want to have multiple ways that we're assessing for cultivating those gifts. I think just what you're seeing here is, we're playing catch-up here, so, with our community. But hopefully we'll continue to get stronger and get at some of these nuanced questions that directors are asking this evening.
Can I follow up on that one? So, we're doing foundational work, got a lot of, lot of room to make up for. So would it make sense, I mean, the sequencing of how we're doing things? I was never good at math, I hated math. But there were other things I was good at, and no one cared. So, is now, when do we start building the capacity around the not-math, language arts, science, you know, the traditional tag focus areas? When do we do that? Because if we're, if we're creating a system, isn't now the time to try to build that as part of a foundation?
So, I don't remember which strategy it was, but we talked about, one of the, one of the strategies that will be the strongest strategy is the one where we, as we write the GVC units, is providing ways for people to not only meet rate and level, but to accelerate students in terms of looking at the different ways they learn and so on. When, when you adopt a philosophy that all kids really can shine in different areas, like you're talking about, that's what we would want to do with the curriculum, that is, is deep enough for us to take kids deep when they need to go deep. And again, that starts with our GVC, our core curriculum, ensuring that when we identify materials that have activities and strategies, that we are utilizing those that really enrich students, as well as those that accelerate learners that are far behind. So you saw in there, DOK, which you guys owe me a quarter. We, we're, they owe a quarter when they use an acronym that we haven't described, so. Depth of knowledge is a way of identifying, how do you look at different types, different ways for students to demonstrate their knowledge? And how do you understand the different ways that students are thinking? Oftentimes, you have people talk about depth of knowledge strategies for talented and gifted students, but it really works for all students, right? Because even students who might have a disability, or have other areas that they struggle with, might be strong in others. I wanted to add a little piece around the multi, multiple ways of being talented and gifted. And I know they stated this, but I just wanted to emphasize that in Oregon, there are three ways you're identified, and that is for academics and reading and math, and then a potential to perform category, as well as the, and that is with the intellectually gifted, right? Intellectually gifted, academically, reading and math, and then potential- Potential to perform is- -in reading and math. Reading and/or math. And in other districts I've been in, there, that is an area where we can talk about expanding what we mean by potential to perform. That is where a district could make a choice to do that. However, where we are right now with GVC, with new assessments, with everything we need to do to build the foundation to ensure that we're at least giving every student an opportunity to be identified as a student, at least in those areas where we already are required to, that's why that's the first step. Because that, there's a lot of work to do there, especially if we want to make sure that we can, we are holding ourselves accountable. So we have to get into classrooms, we have to get through the process of teachers writing, or staff writing plans with the help of the TOSSAs, where we're identifying what are those strategies that address rate and level first, and make sure that people have the supports they need. Given the level of staffing that we currently have, and where we are with implementation of our curriculum, GVC, we have a lot of work to do in those two pieces before adding other things on. Does that make sense? We don't want to go so broad that we're looking at so many different things, that we don't, we can't track not only our own progress, but how effective we're being in the way we support our classroom teachers and our administrators to really meet the needs of the students.
So I have a question about access. So throughout the plan, you talk about the universal testing. But I don't see it referred to, again, specifically with access, or any discussion of whether that will be the screener for access, which would eliminate first and second grade, or whether that's a recommendation, or where we are with that. Because this is a discussion that we've had for several years regarding the equity of kids testing in prior to universal screening, and then the ripple effect from siblings and such. But I didn't see that specifically mentioned in here.
So we haven't made any decisions to change anything about that right now, but that doesn't mean that, working through the rest of the, this year with the Tag Act group, that we might be able to identify that for the next round, the next time around.
So we still use the private screening results for kids prior to the universal screening at- No.
The state of Oregon requires us to test kindergarten through 12th grade.
Madam Chair, would you please have people speak into a mic, so we can hear it? And the people at home can understand what was-
This is Kim Bertelson, she's a Tag TOSA. Hi. So the state of Oregon requires that children, kindergarten through 12th grade, if there's a nomination, that we test them. All students that get into access have already been tested and scored in at least one area in the 99th percentile. So it was redundant to do a universal screening on those second graders, because they're already identified, and already in a program that, that is targeted specifically to their rate and level of learning and their academic needs. So, testing occurs starting in kindergarten, and that's mandated by the state of Oregon.
Okay.
Just to clarify, that kindergarten or first, or first grade, that's by nomination? But then at second grade, everybody gets-
Correct, and only in the area of intellectually gifted. That's the, we give, currently, we use the cognitive abilities test for that. We may switch to a different assessment in the future, for various reasons, that's another conversation. But all second graders are given the opportunity in order to try to widen the net of who we catch on the earlier end. And second grade was chosen eons ago as the year to do that. I know some districts do it in third, but we currently do the intellectual screener or assessment, universal assessment at second grade. But if they're nominated by the teacher or a parent, or as appropriate, as needed, the student can nominate themselves. That can happen, starting in kindergarten.
Palmyra McClellan, I'm also a Tag TOSA. I just wanted to add to that, that a parent can nominate in intellectual reading and math in kindergarten. So a kinder can actually take those three tests, and we'll assess them.
Thank you.
So, reading through the goals, it looked like differentiation within a classroom, in terms of at the elementary level, was the main approach for meeting the needs of tag students. If my child were tag, was not in access, and was doing math three grades ahead, is that really, are they, really, are they, was that second grade, third grade teacher going to have the resources they need to keep my child challenged?
That's a really great opportunity, then, for us to work with other departments. The math TOSSAs could then assist either with us, or with the teachers at that grade level, which we already do now, to have, go and have that conversation on how we can meet the needs of that child. There's also opportunities for students to do single-subject acceleration in mathematics, so that could also be an option for that student who's excelling at a much higher rate.
So are, are we gonna push for that walk-to-math model in more schools? Or a walk-to-reading?
That is something that we have to have a discussion about, because I'm not exactly, exactly sure, again, who's using that, or what that model looks like. Well, and I like to respond to that, the use of that model anyway. It, it works in schools where you have enough classrooms at grade levels to have them walking, where we have, how do I explain this? Where we have really small schools, where we don't have as many grades. Like it works best in a walk-to-read model if you have four classrooms at every grade level, because then you can have that spread of all the different levels that kids are, are at. The other thing is that some teachers don't prefer that model, because there's pros and cons about every model. And in walk-to-read, students are moving a lot, and that's not always great for every kid. And in some school communities, they decide that doesn't work as well for their community, especially in communities where they're really working on creating community in the classroom, and that school environment is one where the students are better off staying with the classroom teacher. In every district I've been in, we've talked about walk-to-read, and there are times it works, and there are times it doesn't. What doesn't work is to mandate it, and to require everybody to do it. It's almost like mandating blended classrooms. Some people can teach them really well, and actually do blend them, and kids still get their instruction at their grade level, or at their rate and level. And other teachers, it's more than they can handle, and it's not the way they teach. And so, those are the decisions we usually use to the building, lead to the building to decide, working with the principals and the leadership team. But one of the things I know we've talked a lot about is, as they already referred to, is how we use TOSSAs, which right now are being utilized mostly for assessment. We think with the strategies we've suggested of moving to for identification, that allows us to free up our TOSSAs for a lot more of the instructional coaching, and working with teachers on plans, and identifying what the resources are they need. And because they're TOSSAs, and they're not in a classroom, responsible for a group of kids, they can move around, they can check with each of the departments, they can get the materials that people need. So there, there's a lot of shifts to do to move to a different model. And I really do believe that the five we've listed, that we've submitted to ODE as our tag plan, are the right steps. I've actually done this work in every single school district I've worked in, in Oregon, partly because there isn't, hasn't been a lot of expertise in a lot of school districts, and people don't understand how you put all these things together at a, at a district level. So, it hasn't been something that as a state, we've had a real robust model for, in the state, or places to take a look at it, take a look at for any of the strategies. So we really are, like, starting from the ground up, with the core, and with changing our assessment model, so we can free up people's time, and have students not be over-assessed, taking assessments that might be more biased. So we're trying to address all of those things in the suggestions we've made for this first. This plan is for three years, and in the plan, we've identified what we're doing in year one, year two, and year three. You have asked questions about the accountability. We, we want to add an accountability step there. And as our TOSSAs and our experts, administrators at the district level, start working more closely with the principals, where we see what is already happening, and where, what kind of supports do they need, will help us build what makes sense for an accountability model. Because what you don't want is just sort of a checklist, that doesn't work. And that's what a lot of people do for accountability, you know, is there a plan? Have we identified in the plan what the kids are doing? And is it happening in the classroom? But there's so much more to know about how it's meeting the students' needs. And that takes more time with the classrooms, with the teachers, giving, once you share, develop the teachers, then helping them manage that. It's hard to manage multiple levels in a classroom. And then there are models that best practice has identified, like clustering students. That's a little bit, maybe a little bit towards what you were talking about, where maybe there's a portion of the day, you have a group of math kids who are, like you mentioned, really high, and there's a way to get them together for a percentage of their time, so that they are interacting with peers who are thinking at that level in that area. So there are different models we can use, but our schools are so different in terms of size and what they're implementing. And because we haven't fully implemented the GVC, there's a lot to learn about what's currently happening, so that we could provide the right supports for each school.
So, I have a couple of questions. One, included in the packet tonight, my mic's on. Included in the packet tonight was the 2018 Tag Act year-end report, and I'm wondering if that informed your plan, and whether there's any sort of outstanding issues from their year-end reports that you feel like needs to be, still need to be addressed?
I think absolutely, in their plan, they talk about the necessity of looking for identification and services for ELL students, and so that is, that is one of the things that spurred our conversation around assessing the assessments, and looking for the best ways to find non-bias, although there isn't, right? But, and then also, the rate and level at the elementary schools, and that's really brought us to that professional development goal, as well as this curriculum goal, and inhering the variety of experiences across schools that have been represented in some of those meetings and through this document. of those meetings and through this document. Also, and so I think that a lot of their suggestions were taken into account, and we are still working closely with that group.
Okay. I also had a question about, on page seven, under this tag, students instructional plans, it says, "Currently in PPS, written tag instructional personal learning plans are not required for individual students unless requested by a parent." I'm just curious, because that relies on parents knowing about it, having the ability to ask for it. So I'm curious, of the tag identified students, how many of them have those plans? And, and then I have, I'll give you my other part of my question as well, but then down below, it says, "PPS, the goal is to create individual instructional plans," which is a different word. Is that something different, or it's labeled something different? The top one's instructional personal learning plans, the other's individual instructional plans? Are those the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. So then, my, so the goal is, is that everyone has one. So I guess my question is, what's the gap between, like, the percentage that currently have them of tag students to our goal, which is a hundred percent?
I, we don't have the exact numbers. It's large, it's a large gap.
A large gap, okay.
Yes.
So, so for this year, what has been requested, or what we have actually facilitated at the school level? We have had two, and we've just recently had two more, so that's four.
I'm sorry, plans?
Written, written individual plans.
We have four, that's it?
This year, yes.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
My TOSSAs might be able to give you a better idea how many more though.
So lots of opportunities for improvement.
They're done at the school level, they're done at the school level, director, they're done at the school level. So it could be that we don't have all of the numbers. However, the tag, we do pay teachers to write those plans currently, and so for one hour of time. So that's how we're able to keep track how many have been done this year, by what has been sent for us to pay for.
So are we shifting from, how are we shifting from this culture of that parents need to know to ask for it, to every student getting one? Have we already made that shift, or you don't have to ask for one anymore?
No, we have not made that shift.
Okay.
That's, again, we recognize that in coming in as a deficiency, and something that's not good for our kids, and so we want, we realize that this needs to occur. And I think that there's some different stakeholders that we need to bring to the table to find out, how can we achieve this for our kids?
I appreciate the sweet answer, too. I mean, that's good to know where we're at. If you have any questions?
It's good, thanks.
Thank you.
Helpful. Okay?
I'd like to follow up, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to follow up on curriculum development, and I really do want to highlight the Tag Act criticism, that our science curriculum in high school is not aligned with tag students and their needs and their experiences. And actually, since now freshman-level physics does not require algebra, it isn't even really aligned with a very significant percentage of our middle school students, who are getting first-year algebra in compacted math, in seventh and eighth grades. So I understand that we have adopted a science curriculum. I just want to point out, I don't think it's meeting the needs of the kids.
So, as a professional expert in how to lie with statistics, I looked at this chart, which is male versus female, and I went, holy crud, what a disparity. And then I looked and saw, that wasn't a zero down there, and so it way overstates that, so just, something to think about in the future.
Data can tell us anything, right?
Just on the demographic stuff, it would also be helpful when you're giving this kind of information to clarify not only what the division, I mean, how the demographics break out among kids who are identified as tag, but how, how each subgroup compares with the demographic breakdown across the district as a whole.
Yeah, exactly.
So like the, the relative rate.
Absolutely. We can get that. One of the things we talked about in putting it together is that we realize the data we're sharing with you is this, this is what we have, this is what we know, and we have a lot of work to do to say, where are we going to go, and how should we represent that work? And Dwayne Davis will, when we work on the data-driven piece, that will be, definitely be included. I wanted to mention just about the N-NAT, which is the assessment we're looking at doing, using, it is the one in, let's see, the last four districts I've been in, we made the same shift from COGAP to N-NAT, because it was the least biased one we could find, and part of it is because of the non-verbal part. But I just wanted to reassure the board that we definitely would not just use one measure. You're not allowed to, I mean, the state requires that you have multiple measures, and none of us would ever recommend you would just use one measure. However, in the districts where we implemented the N-NAT, it was, we did identify more historically underserved kids. It, it at least helped broaden people's perspective of kind of what the profile looks like of a kid who might be a tag kid. There were a lot more kids that teachers said, hmm, I wouldn't have thought about that. And then when we asked them for those additional pieces of work samples, how they're doing with different things in the class, the kinds of conversations, which there's questions that guide you through asking the teacher about that, it helps us with that whole perception of having high expectations for all kids, even when they have struggled with language or whatever, for reasons that have nothing to do with intelligence, they have to do with their experience or background. And so, that is the other reason why I support, supported them in that recommendation to change assessments. I've seen it happen, you know, kind of district by district, for that same reason, and in every place I've been in, we've been able to identify more students in all of those demographic groups with that assessment.
What assessment was that?
The, it's called the, Nagliari, but it has a version, is it five?
It's N-NAT three, and then AT three.
Everything has an acronym in education.
Yes.
And a number.
Right. And quarters will be forthcoming.
Yes. Because I used them too.
Yes, you did.
Okay, IOU quarter. We'll just keep a little.
Can I ask a question about twice-exceptional kids? So my first question is, why are we not tracking kids with 504 plans? Why, why only IEPs?
Why are we, why are you only what?
So, so there's a, under the tag umbrella, so what, if I understood correctly, so we're, we're tracking the numbers on twice-exceptional kids based on IEPs and tag identification, but we're not identifying kids with 504s.
And we do not have that information at this time. That's a very good question, so we'll get it, we'll get that information.
I do know we have somebody who oversees 504, and typically, you do not want us situated in special education, because it's not part of special education.
Right.
It's outside. So we do have a district person who does that, so if you can share with me your questions around that.
It's the tag 504 intersection.
Right.
Yes.
I mean.
How many kids have a 504 in a tag designation?
I am aware that a lot of, a lot of schools often suggest to parents that 504 is better than an IEP, gives more flexibility, it's, this is what I'm told.
So if you hear that, if you could refer that to us, we can help.
Okay, but even so, I mean, there, there are a lot of kids who might qualify for a 504, and not for an IEP, who nevertheless have pretty significant needs that are, you know, may not qualify for sped, but, but nevertheless, you know, have, have some real issues that need to be addressed.
And that's the whole reason we want to move to multi-tiered systems of support. Because when you do, put in a three-tiered model, and you're looking at every single student, one of the first steps you do towards the beginning of the year and in each semester is what we call hundred percent meetings, where you're looking at a hundred percent of the kids. And then you look at the twenty percent of the students that are, whose need, who are still kind of falling through the cracks. Sort of historically, you've had special ed, or you've had the general ed classroom, and there was kind of nothing in between. That won't be true once we've implemented MTSS, there'll be those layers, levels of support inside the regular classroom, and then in addition to the classroom, whether that those supports need to be an acceleration, or whether they need to be, like I mentioned, an enrichment above and beyond. I can even give you an example of how that works, could work, for example, in an elementary school. So one, one district I was in, where we implemented a tier-two time in every elementary school, and students who needed more intervention to catch up, they got their skill groups, and the students who needed to be accelerated were accelerated, whether they were tag identified or not. It's my core belief, is that all students should be challenged, no matter where they are, in every content areas. That's how I taught, that's how I led as an administrator. We're not there yet, but we will be marching in that direction, because the multi-tiered system of support is a great model for containing all of that. So that we're not just saying, well, do they have this identification, and then do they have a plan? There should be a plan for every student, whether they need to be accelerated or they need to catch up.
And I think that's one of the points that was made in the tag discussion, was, will there be social-emotional learning training for the tag coordinators as part of that, to make sure that they're meeting, that we're meeting the social-emotional needs as well as the acceleration needs?
That can absolutely happen.
Yeah.
I'm interested to know, real quick, so tag isn't just a one-year program, right? You can keep going, so I'd be interested to see, how many students are doing the full, is it seven or eight, like, are continuing with it?
So, so as a student, you could be identified in kinder and go all the way through twelfth grade.
Through, okay, but are?
We never pull you out, once you're identified. Once you're identified as a student that has, that's talented and gifted, each year, we should always be meeting the rate and level of whatever content area you, you are identified in.
Okay, okay, right. Good.
Again, that, that happens better where you have an MTSS model in place, because you're looking at all kids, and as they get, go from one grade level to the next, and then as you hand off to the next grade level, you've got those plans. Right now, so I could talk forever tonight, and I know that I'm not supposed to, but we are also getting a data tracker, that's what we call it shorthand, I'm sure it has a better name, but basically, every student, their data will be in there, and then as we provide interventions or enrichments, whatever that is, will be in there for that student. So each teacher, as they move through the grade levels, will be able to see across their experience, what has their experience been. So, and that is work that the MTSS team is doing out of Student Support Services. So you can see how closely we all have to work together. In fact, every time we meet, I show them the Venn diagram of the four overlapping circles, because the real work is right in the center, where all of this crosses over. That's how we ensure that no students fall through the cracks, and every student is challenged. We know where we want to go, we have a long way to go.
As we are looking at data, it's going to be very important to look at building-level data.
Right.
To my certain knowledge, going back to at least 2002, rates of tag identification going from nothing in our poorest schools, and it's all socioeconomic, up to fifty-five percent. And if you know the tag number, you know everything else about that school. You know what the length of teacher tenure is, you know whether or not enrollment is rising or declining, you know what the budget is, you know what the course offerings are, you know what the racial demographics are, you know what parental income is, everything off of the tag number. And we really need to do better for our kids.
So, this is not a question about this particular plan, but I'd like to request, tonight, we're going to get a report on the progress of the middle school implementations, and I would like, at the end of this year, to get a snapshot and our assessment of the access program, and what challenges were present, presented this year with the two sites, and, and co-location with other schools, and, you know, what worked, what didn't, and what we potentially need to do for next year to provide support for those students in school communities.
I'd also like, at an appropriate time to, for us to invite Tag Act to tell us how the lottery for access went this year.
Just Director Bailey, to that point, I'm wondering, it seems like that conversation is always trailing after, after it happened, that we...
There should be some things happening now, I'd be interested to know that they're happening.
Right, so I just wonder if that is a good conversation to have in advance of, in advance and then sort of a post-mortem versus the post-mortem, when often, it's either too late, or it's just more complicated, or people have made other choices.
Would it be possible to get some sort of, like, I can't remember what the deadlines are for this, I, I think they're, the deadline's coming up real fast.
Right, so the access applications open on February eighth, and for access schools, it will close on April twenty-fifth. That is the access application itself. This, the, that is done at the school site level, where the, a team, whether it's a teacher, facilitator, has to identify what the educational need is on top of the ninety-nine percentile for that child to, to fill out that application. Also can be a solo application, where if a parent can't get to the school and has documented need, that the child needs extra educational support, they fill out the access application. We are not, we are not evaluating, we are not looking at other criteria to make a decision of whether or not that goes, that child's application, if they qualify for access with the ninety-nine and an additional educational need, that they would be in the lottery if they have also completed the school-mint transfer application that's done through enrollment and transfer. So they have two applications that they have to fill out. This has been, this, it will be exactly the same process as it was last year. We have not made any changes to that application process. We trained the facilitators, last, last facilitators meeting, on the process to do that, and they were very excited that we were not changing the process. We are also, any child that qualified for the last two years, not eighteen, nineteen, but for the sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen year, that qualified for the lottery, that means that they had the educational need, and the ninety-nine ended the school-mint, and got into the lottery, they will not have to do the access application at the school level, they will just need to do the school-mint transfer application, because we have that documentation of their ninety-nine. So it actually gives, that we will be notifying those parents of that. It'll also be on the front and center of our website, along with the access application, so that we are taking, again, the barriers away from some of the children who may wanted to go and apply and be in the, be at access, that were not as... that were not, as many say, drew the lucky number. So we are not looking at those applications that are coming from the school site to determine whether or not the application, you know, evaluating the need, we're not deciding, yes, that's enough or that's not, you know, not enough. If it comes from the school level and it's signed off that that has been done and again, a parent solo can do that, it does not take a whole team, then we will go ahead and process along that, along with the school mint lottery application. So they'll all go into the lottery.
So just a question about that, because I'm not sure I followed all of that, but
Yeah, I know it's a lot.
This is a more foundational question. So if access is a program and not a school and it's an alternative program, wouldn't, is, why are, why do we have the lottery? Because an alternative program, this is just more of a foundational question, or this, they can only go in during the normal lottery time. If they're an alternative program and it's supposed to be for students who, it's a specific fit, not sort of random, why do we have the sort of, sort of strict lottery deadlines? Versus other schools that are not programs, but other schools where it is supposed to be a random exercise?
So, so we will have the lottery, there will be a waitlist. The waitlist generally is closed on October 20th. That is not going to happen. It'll be based on space. So continuing throughout the year to bring in the children during that time. If Krista, the principal, the principal, hi. The principal has space into the, in that classroom, then they will notify enrollment and transfer. Enrollment and transfer will then be able to notify the parents that that space is opened up and if they want to do the transfer.
I'm sorry, but I swear I saw last year a whole bunch of back and forth that, from the enrollment and transfer office or from the district somehow, that the, the time period, there was this distinct time period like all the other lotteries and that, because it was treated like a school, that if you, you know, didn't go in or choose to opt in or wasn't the same time period as everybody else, you wouldn't be able to get into the program. But that's what the rules, my understanding for the schools. But it, it sounded like last year, the same rules that were being applied to schools were being applied to the access program. So if you didn't make it in or you weren't in during that transfer period, you didn't get in, so.
So Judy Brennan, enrollment and transfer, I can share a little bit around the technical part of the application cycle. And I, I think, maybe you can clarify for me, you're, you're talking about the process that we use for like focus options, dual language and other, which may be programs, they may, they aren't all schools, but they're not alternatives. So I think your fundamental question was, if it's an alternative program, should we have sort of a standard lottery mechanism? And I think that, part of that eligibility piece lives outside my world. But certainly for, for many of the grades at access, we may have more interested students than we have space in those classrooms. There may only be two spaces in the, say, two classrooms at 7th grade and we may have four or five students who are deemed eligible. So they've gone through the eligibility process, they're deemed eligible. We just don't have enough space the way the program's configured right now. And so it was just decided that the fairest way then to, to meet those students' applications is through a lottery where we're prioritizing students who qualify for free reduced meals and then any who are siblings of current students. Other than that, it's a random number. So the, the random number lottery part only comes into place after students have been, been made eligible. There is a cycle, there's a period of time in which you're supposed to apply and it's up to the department and program to determine whether there's an opportunity to, to add additional applicants over time. If there's a lengthy waitlist already in place, it may be a false promise to let additional applications in.
I guess I'm looking at places where there, the program isn't full. That why would we have a, like, this, this is, this is the window and it's closed and if we have students who are interested and there's openings, why wouldn't we, why would we stick to this strict timeline? That, again, this is an alternative program, it's supposed to be for the student, have a different purpose than a program. You can probably, you can probably ask the question more articulately.
I'm going to put it in the form of a question. So if, if you have a grade level at access that has space, kids moved out, whatever, and you have a waitlist, are kids on the waitlist allowed to join the access program mid-year?
Yes, well, moving forward, they're, they're allowed to, but they weren't, we didn't resort to that.
Yeah, so our understanding, our collective understanding, I think, is that there were empty spaces
That's correct.
at grade levels at access, even though there was a waitlist.
So we had a work group that has been meeting a, a group of, of parents from access, from not only from Tag, from, from other groups at access who have been working on the application cycle and review. And one of the things that came up is exactly that, is, you know, if there is space and Krista or the principal at access would then, no matter what the time of year is, just like another place, that a child could move into that space, no matter the time of the year, if they admit that eligibility requirement and, and gone through that process through enrollment and transfer.
So, so we are or we have already removed that barrier?
So we are removing that barrier. We have another, we're still, our group is still meeting, but that is something that's already been put into the process guide as we've worked forward in, in producing that for, for the 1920s.
That's great.
Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't ask the question very articulately, but I'm glad it's going to be fixed going forward.
I didn't hear gender balancing as part of the lottery?
There are separate buckets for each gender so that we can try and get as close as possible to district average for gender. We run a separate lottery for boys versus girls. If we don't fill all the slots, we may take more of, of the other gender just so that we don't leave empty spaces. We actually had to do that with last year's lottery. We weren't able to achieve as high a gender balance, but we were able to accept more students in the program to not, so that we didn't have seats empty.
The numbers still look lower for third grade than they have been.
And we accepted all the applicants that we had available.
So could I go back to something you said earlier? So correct me if I'm wrong, what I think I heard was that you're now going to notify any kid who was qualified over the last two years?
Yes, for, we have information from 16, 17, the children who were in the lottery, that's correct, so this is far back. As we have 16, 17, 17, 18, because we have those. So we have that information, if they, they met all the eligibility requirements and were in the lottery and didn't get the lucky number, then, then, and are not at access presently, then they will just have to do the school mint application along with a letter that they have from us saying, yes, that they were participating in, participating in the process.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that, because I, I think the, my understanding is that the waitlist, partially because of the uncertainty in the last couple of years, the waitlist has decreased substantially. So, thank you for doing that, I think that'll help. Any other questions?
So, just in terms of checking that lottery process, what would be the next checkpoint that we're on track? So my, you know, I, I, if it's not a post-mortem, what, how do we track that we're doing what we need to do in terms of communicating with prospective applicants and so on?
Would it suffice to publish guidelines for our families and updated FAQ about enrollment for access so that they're aware that this moving forward will be, that'll be transparent that way?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. And it occurred to me after we had started that I was supposed to start off the meeting asking if there were any students who wanted to make comments. Do we have any students signed up? Okay, it's probably a good thing.
But it looks like we have a student who's not signed up.
I have not signed up.
Come on up.
So, hello. Yeah, my name is Aaron Quetta, I'm currently a sophomore at Franklin High School. I've been in the tag program since kindergarten or first grade. Sorry. High school is an interesting experience and it's new for me, but as many people have said, being in the tag program hasn't meant that much. I'm lucky to go to Franklin High School because they have a lot of electives, which are of high level, but the class sizes are a problem. For example, I'm very interested in mathematics, Calculus BC is technically available. There are less than 10 students who could take that class. So the thing that I am seeing is even in cases when classes are available and there are students who want to take them, teachers, resources, time doesn't always exist to do that. My understanding, or my idea for the best way to solve that would be to, I guess, connect with outside resources like colleges and things like that. From what I can see, Reed is like the only school that is offering that and they're only offering it for seniors, for one class. And there's a slight monetary barrier. And so that's, that's one thing, is it, is just, tag isn't just a program where you get people in and then it continues to exist, but it's also something that exists for high schoolers.
It's kind of rude, sorry.
Oh, was that it cutting me off or?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, cool. And yeah, I guess that's, that's a big thing. Someone mentioned that the science curriculum isn't that great, I have to stand by that. It's, it's not that interesting as a tag student and it's required. I have to be there in class every day. And in general, for, for kind of like the educational options as a tag high schooler, our AP classes and at least from my experience, this is my first year taking AP classes, but I'm taking many of them. They are the same type of environment where it's about education and learning. AP classes, because of the way our school year are scheduled, I think one of my teachers said, we're too much, we're two months behind the AP, like where the AP exam thinks the school year is going to start, by the time the school year starts. And so basically, we have to cram an entire college course into six months and then prepare for testing. And there's a lot of information there, but it's, it's not really an educational opportunity. It's more like, you did it, you did the test, got the rubber stamp, you're probably going to forget it next year.
Could you, could you wrap it up?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's it. Besides that, I don't think there's ever been any tag coordinated things ever at any of my schools. I had the chance to go to access. It was, it was good, but I guess like a high school equivalent would be also nice.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you for your, I was just, this didn't come up in the conversation around tag specifically tonight, but the district is in a, a visioning process right now, which hopefully you've had some opportunities, I don't know if you did earlier tonight. But two themes that have been coming up a lot in that visioning process have to do with dual credit opportunities in high school and how as a district do we improve those opportunities? And the other is just blended learning, online learning as, as a tool that we can employ for every single individual kid who needs to access something that's not available in his or her school. So those are things that are getting a fair amount of attention right now.
If I can quickly comment on online learning, because I know this is still taking up time. But online learning personally is not that enjoyable for me. It's not that engaging, you're not working with another person, you can't really ask questions. I, I, for, for my work, I go to a tutor outside who I am lucky enough to not have to pay money for. And I meet with him for about an hour and just having a person who you can talk to, who you can speak to, who you can ask questions, to work through a textbook and to work through problems is so much better than working online and, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just remember, in the good old days, Portland Public Schools did not offer calculus at any of the high schools. There was a night class with a PCC instructor for 30 kids collectively from, that was just first year calculus. We've, we've come, things, things are better now.
It's better. Okay, the next item is an update on middle schools and Superintendent Grayor?
Directors, we're going to invite up our Chief of Schools, Dr. Craig Quayar, to play leadoff batter here and provide us with some context and background of what we'll be sharing with you this evening. And he's going to have a whole cast of characters, I think he's calling up today.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having us tonight. One of the, one of the new routines that we're going to try to do moving forward in board meetings as well as work sessions is to try to get our principals to the table to not only talk about the work that is happening within the walls of their building, but to also be able to answer any burning questions that we may be also hearing from your constituents out in the field. In most cases, we find out that as we're addressing some concerns or trying to ask questions or trying to inquire about something at the building level, sometimes we circumvent the principal entirely in itself, when in fact, they are the ones that are on the ground, leading the charge in the work every single day. So one of the things that the board has had questions on is wanting an update on our middle schools as well as Lent under the leadership of our new principal, Richard Smith. So we are very lucky to have four amazing principals here today to go through a presentation and to be able to talk about the great work that is happening at their buildings and also to be able to engage in a mild dialogue with the board. Now I preface that mild dialogue because we do know that our students are back at school tomorrow and I don't, I want to make sure that I protect the principal's time because they are here with us for the duration of the night and they've been working very hard. So I'm putting a 10:00 PM cap on that, so. I, I wanted to make sure I, I prefaced that upfront, so. We do want, we do want to protect their time, but we also want to make sure that we are engaging in a very robust dialogue as well about the work that's happening in our schools. Our principals here are accompanied by their wonderful teams. We have Keely Simpson as well as Lisa McCall that are here that will be joining Krista from Oakley Green as well as Kathleen Elwood from Roseway Heights. We also have Oscar Gilson and Dr. Corey Seymour that is here from the OSP team that will be accompanied, Richard Smith from Lent, as well as Natasha Butler from Tubman. So without further ado, if I can go ahead and call up the teams, so we can go ahead and start the presentations.
Good evening. Good evening.
We're going to start with Principal Howard from Oakley Green Middle School.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all again. I remember our conversations this summer. I feel like it was just yesterday. So, it's really nice to be up in front of you again and talk about the work that we've been doing. So, we're going to start with our priorities. When we met this summer, I had just joined and I spent a lot of time conducting listening sessions with the community, with families, with students, and with staff, and I was collecting a lot of feedback and data. And I wanted to use that to be able to draft our three priorities for this year. And so, we landed, after looking all of that, at all of that feedback as well as looking at all the data, we landed at three priorities focusing on culture and climate. So, really creating a safe school environment where students and families and teachers feel safe and connected and cared for at the school. That's our priority number one. And we landed on some key metrics to be able to measure that as well. Priority two is around the instruction that happens at Oakley, and that's again based on data and feedback that we received from several people. And priority three was really about staff retention and really, because Oakley has been kind of in a state of turnover after the last few years, really focusing on retaining staff from year to year. And so, we were able to synthesize all of the data that we received as an admin team and we went on a retreat this summer for a couple of days. We created these draft priorities and then they were approved by our community, by our families, through site council, and also through our staff. And this is where we ended up. So, as we move through this, we're kind of going to dive deep into two of our priorities, priority one and priority two, and kind of talk about the successes that we've had and sort of the work streams that we've been doing at Oakley. Priority one is around school culture and climate. And so, we started by, in our summer PD session with the two and a half days before the, the students started with us, as a staff, we decided to come together and create our values and what we really want to value at Oakley and what we're going to create our entire PBIS system, Positive Behavior Intervention System for, and also what we're going to teach students. And so, as a staff, we were able to align on three core values of growth, collaboration, and caring. And throughout that, we then were able to define what that means when a student's displaying the value of caring or they're displaying the value of growth. And we had some key indicators that then we trained on and aligned as a staff. And so, that was, that was a big deal and that launched into our PBIS system where we are awarding students for positive behaviors when they display core values of growth, collaboration, and caring. They earn ON points and they're able to accumulate ON points throughout the year and they're able to, you know, spend those ON points through our, we call it a dragon auction that happens once a quarter, where students literally get to bid on different items that they have requested. And we treat it just like an auction, so they have like a paddle that has their point value and then they're able to bid on items such as like out of school trips or different reward system, or rewards that we have based on their feedback. We also were able to develop our restorative system on if students are not displaying values, how are we going to address those and how are we going to align them back to our value system? And so, the values at Oakley really guide what we're doing every day. And then the other big work stream was our development of just an MTSS system of just having, you heard Dr. Curtis earlier talk about the MTSS system. And so, at Oakley, we are able to, we're, we're doing different PD opportunities on Fridays where we're learning about universal design for learning, which is good for any learner, you know, special ed education students, TAG learners, and just really any student at Oakley. We spend Friday huddles, half an hour every Friday, learning about that. We also are, have developed a robust SIT process, which is a student intervention team, where every Wednesday we are coming together and we meet before school as grade level teams. And then on Thursdays, we meet as a SIT team where we're talking through different interventions for different students that have been referred and we do sort of a problem of practice protocol where we determine next steps. So, the majority of the work that we've been doing so far has really been around priority one and creating a safe school environment where every student feels cared for. And starting around October, November, we were able to start diving into priority two, which is around instruction. And so, some of the work streams that we were able to start within the instruction priority is really diving into training staff on the GVC, training them on looking at their standards and understanding their standards at a deep level. We really prioritize as an admin team that consists of assistant principals and myself, we're really prioritizing going into classrooms and providing feedback to teachers. We have a goal of being in classrooms at least seven times this year, where we're providing written feedback to teachers and then having face-to-face conversations. And we're on track to meeting that goal, so I'm really happy about that. We've also been utilizing MAP data, which allows us to identify students that are tier one, tier two, and tier three, and then providing additional supports accordingly. And so, we've trained the staff on using that data. My previous school that I was at, we used MAP pretty, pretty robustly, and so we've been able to do that this year and train the staff to identify the different goal reports and make sure that students are setting their own growth target goals. We've done different advisory lessons based on this. And we took our second round of MAP last week and it's showing very promising data. We haven't disaggregated all of it, but we're, we're headed in the right direction. And yeah, so, so this whole second semester, we're really just switching over to diving into instruction now that the school has really stabilized around priority one. One of the other things that we've been doing this year is really trying to streamline our different types of meetings and different types of community involvement. Prior to my arrival at Oakley, there was site council and there was PTA. And sometimes the roles weren't clearly defined, so this year we're really trying to identify our different meeting types, what the purpose is, and then making sure that the community understands the meetings that exist. And so, if they have feedback on a certain area, this is where they would attend. We also started coffee with the principal this year, where every month they're able to come and we switch it, one month it's in the morning, the other month it's in the afternoon, and they're able to come. And that's a more informal setting where we're just, I give a short presentation and then there's a lot of questions and answers and a lot of just them giving feedback and then us adjusting based on their feedback. And then we've really tried to build our relationship with SEI. We have SEI in our building and so we've been working on streamlining our practices between admin and SEI. And so, we've developed weekly meetings with each other to try to ensure that we're all on the same page and then being able to discuss what happened at SIT and then talk about how they can support us and how we can support them. And that's been really positive. And in terms of our next steps, so I know I've spoken a lot about like what we've been doing, but we have a lot of plans to finish out the year strong. As I stated before, we just took the second round of MAP and we're using that data to really determine which students need which level of support and identifying tier two and tier three students and being able to determine which supports they need in both reading and math. And we've opened up more sections of support classes and things like that. And we've also created different pullout models and push-in models where some teachers and extra support staff can go in and support students that need additional support. We've also continued with scheduling instructional planning days once a quarter so that core teachers are able to then come together and plan together through a PLC model or professional learning community model where they are able to talk through their upcoming curriculum with a TOSA or myself or an assistant principal. And we're committed to pulling them or, or having them participate in a planning day every quarter. So, that's continuing to happen. And then we've also switched up our Tuesday professional development cycles so that it rotates through four topics. At the beginning of the year, we were really focused around our priority one, which is the school, school culture and climate. And now, we're really focused around these four topics like restorative justice, avid strategies, instructional planning, and using data to drive decision-making. And then, as we're working on this year, we're also working on plans for next year because coming in on July 1 this past year, it was really challenging to try to do everything that we wanted to do. So, this, this semester, we're really switching gears and while still maintaining our drive for this year, we're really starting to plan for next year by creating a really robust master schedule process. We, I've sent the assistant principal and the counselors to Pearson Training in December and they've learned a whole process that's data-driven and they're going to implement that this semester. We are identifying staff recruitment and trying to have conversations with staff and getting our numbers and seeing where our retention numbers are early on so that we can develop a really, a really great hiring process and ensure that we're hiring early rather than the summer we were, you know, frantically trying to fill positions because we didn't know. So, we're trying to think really proactively about that and just using data to make decisions and determine priorities for next year. So, that's how we are closing out this year.
You're really speaking my language. I know it. I'm like, oh my gosh, this is great. All my data-driven, MTSS is your focus. So, kudos. I, I really am, I really love what I heard.
Thank you.
I'm excited and I want to come visit.
Thank you. You're welcome anytime.
Yeah. I, I'm also really impressed with the seven observations. That's a lot.
Yeah.
It's amazing. And you're on track.
Yeah, we are on track. Yeah. It's a lot of hard work.
That's great.
I've been very happy, not with, just with what I've seen or what I've heard, but with what I've seen. The kids at Oakley are clearly doing much, much better this year. The community is doing much better. I really appreciate all the work that you've done. I, I do have some questions. And, oh, feel free to kick these up to somebody. For specifically math and reading interventions, how are you getting resources for that? Are you getting enough resources for that more broadly for the district? How are we allocating math and reading supports? Is it one or two per school or is it done on the basis of need? So, please.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, we were, we were allocated one reading intervention specialist for this year. And then with some creative problem solving, I was able to free up a couple of sections in math to provide math support. I've also, you know, every school is allocated grant funds in a certain way, and so I've done some creative problem solving with that too for second semester based on our math numbers from MAP. We have hired a person that is going to do a push-in model, and so she's been pushing into some of our classes and doing small group. And then she's been working with that teacher to pull out sets, sets of students depending on the data and depending on the need, because we weren't allocated an actual position. But I've figured out some ways around it and how I'm using my funds because I, based on our MAP data, students are coming into Oakley, you know, one to two grade levels below, and so math is a really big need. And over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of transition in the math department. So, that's also created some gaps. I would say that, you know, next year, looking at our staffing models and things like that, trying to figure out how we can get a resource for math would be something that we're looking at or how I can move things around to prioritize math as well. But we've been able to do some things creatively this year.
Okay. More broadly, do we know how those resources are being assigned across the district? Honestly, I have the same question for each of the other schools. I have the same question about social and emotional supports, PBIS, what kinds of resources are you getting and how are those being assigned?
Let me just start by saying.
Yep.
This is a fundamental culture shift for us as an organization in that how do we differentiate school supports and interventions across the school portfolio? And I know our chief of schools and the team could, could speak to that. We know that there was some more equitable resourcing of our schools last spring with staffing, with equity funds, certainly our title schools. We want to do more. And this is, this is a priority area that as a senior leadership team, the Board can expect that we're going to be bringing forward. We want our schools that are working really hard right now and taking the nickels they have to be able to take it to the next level. So, this is the sort of the conversation that we're having and we're obligated to sort of stipulate and articulate what that plan is under ESSA anyways. So, we're, this is very much sort of work in progress right now that's being constructed. I don't know if Keely wants to speak a little more or our chief of schools on this.
I would just second, exactly. I would just add to what Superintendent Guerrero said, and we realize we do need differentiated supports. Right now, we do have, you know, fabulous leaders who are able to determine what their priorities are and move their resources around effectively. And so, Christine is an example of that. She realizes that she needed math and reading intervention and so she was able to move the resources around to make sure that she provided those supports. And I know that when Dr. Elwood comes up and speaks about Roseway Heights, she'll speak to the same thing. And so, they were able to use some of their equity funds to make sure that that happened. And so, that's something we'll continue to support them in, in terms of the PD and, and her doing some work within the staff within the day, that's something we're also very supportive of. And so, we're going to, you know, continue to move forward and help them develop a very campus-specific plan to meet the needs of their kids. And so, that is something we will work with them on in the spring.
I have a quick question about especially your first goal around climate and culture, but it pertains to the others as well. Can you just talk about how these school-wide initiatives that you've articulated so clearly fit within the broader district initiatives of the same, in the same areas? And so, I think we still have a climate plan that's due for every school. So, is what you described your climate plan or is it something additional or different? Or how does that all fit together?
Yeah, what I described, is this, is this on? Is our, our climate plan. In fact, every school has to take a, they have to go through a TFI process twice a year and score on the different indicators and things like that. And so, we're on track. We hit 80% at Oakley after the first couple of months. And so, yeah, what I described is everything that's built into our, our climate plan and all of the supports that we have in place have like helped us create such a big gain at the beginning because it aligns perfectly with what the district is also saying as well.
And I guess I have a similar question around the MTSS work that you're describing. How does that fit in with what we're trying to build system-wide?
Yeah, so we're taking, we're taking an approach of really just supporting all learners and everything that we're doing is in the framework of like, of UDL where, you know, it's universal design for learning, where students, no matter what level, are really getting an individualized component and it's really differentiated by individual students. And I would say that aligns also perfectly with what the district has been doing in really diving into teachers and their content and understanding their, their content standards and then how to differentiate from there. I think first, we're, our first step is really understanding how to unpack what those standards are, understanding the grade level appropriate standard, and then being able to differentiate based on that. And so, that's really the approach that we've been taking at Oakley. And yeah, I think it's, it's been pretty positive too.
Thank you.
Can I just?
TFI for the climate?
Sorry.
It's a tiered fidelity inventory too, which is aligned to the school climate plan.
And what, what Christina and her team have done a really good job of is the tier-one interventions in terms of MTSS. And they spent a lot of time at the beginning of the year making sure that And they spend a lot of time at the beginning of the year, making sure that there were highly effective tier-one interventions in the classroom. And so I know some of you talked about coming to visit, but you're going to see kids in class, and you're going to see hallways clear when the tardy bell rings, and kids engaged in learning. And so that's where that, that tier-one comes in with the MTSS.
So the metric on climate is not, it's not, it's pitched to the TFI, not to the survey that we're doing? The panorama or whatever?
The metric that I chose for Oakley this summer, based on the information that I knew and what our team knew, was really about a, a survey that we're giving to families and staff. That's the metric that we chose. The district does a metric, too, on the TFI. So I mean, all of that's kind of bundled together. It can be an additional metric, but that's the reported metric that we're also giving to the district.
So you did your own survey?
Oh, we, we created our own survey, yeah, that our site council approved at Oakley, and that we're giving multiple times this year.
Okay.
I think what you're hearing is a concerted effort to integrate a lot of different input and feedback from school, community, student, staff. So yes, there's a tiered fidelity index. It lays out what are the research-based elements that need to be in place in a school, especially at tier-one, so that you can start to distinguish who needs those more intensive interventions and supports. But if you combine that with some qualitative and anecdotal data by hearing from the students themselves and from our families, you, you can also take that into account. And so we want to be data-informed. We don't want to limit ourselves to one instrument, the fact that the school community has elected to incorporate and rapid, I'm, I'm just still amazed here because if I think back just six to 10 months, this is pretty amazing progress, I have to say. All the right acronyms, all the right kind of work, pretty ambitious agenda. So I just, I really commend you and your team.
Thank you. So I guess I can't top the accolades from the superintendent, so I'll just say what he said. But I have a question, just in the spirit of trying to get to 10 o'clock. I'm just kidding. So on some of the goals here, you have, you know, seventy, fifty percent, eighty percent. I'm wondering if you could share sort of what your baseline was on each of those, and then sort of to what that growth looks like, or the magnitude of the change that you're looking to achieve?
Yeah, that's a great question. We, so the baseline data for the first priority with the, the survey that was given, we had the survey data from last year. Site council had given a survey to families and to students, and so that's how we, we determined the seventy percent. I think the survey was, results last year were hovering around the fifty percent mark. For the second priority, the MAP measure, that's something that NWEA, the test, that, the people that give the MAP test, they recommend that schools should be at fifty percent or more of their students meeting their individual growth target. And so what that means is a student will be given their individual score on how they scored in math and in reading. And then NWEA or MAP says that they should achieve this, this growth by the end of the year, and this is their growth goal. So like a student coming in at two fourteen, let's say, they should end the year at two eighteen. And so their growth goal would be that, they would grow four points in, let's say, reading. I'm just making these numbers up. But so that's what that's saying is that fifty percent of our, more of our students will meet their individualized growth goal. So it's not really about how, where a student comes in, it's more about where they should be by the end of the year according to the nationally-normed test because it's normed against other students taking that same test.
Okay, so it's, I'll just follow, and then it's not based on their trajectory that they've shown thus far. It's like, here's where you're at, and here's the standard.
Correct. Yeah, and it's saying all of the students that take this test, if they score this range, this is where they should be at by the end of the year, if they're making adequate growth progress in a school that is, you know, able to show adequate growth. And so the norm is at fifty percent or more, and a school should be able to meet that of students. And so that's why we chose that goal. I have much higher ambitions, and I, after we disaggregate the second round, I'm hoping that we can score a lot.
I was going to say, as many schools, we have students that average growth won't get them on track. We need accelerated growth, so.
Right, right. And on track versus where the, where, you know, MAP says that they should be is really about the level that they're coming in at. I agree with you. Like, we want, we want our students that are, I mean, if our data's showing that students are coming in one to two grade levels below on average in math, obviously, we need to accelerate that process. So we're looking at that. I was just going with what they recommend for this year, and then hoping that like, our data will show a lot more progress, and that in the future, we can have a much more ambitious goal, but we'll go with the recommended goal for this year. And then our last priority around staff retention, that's based on, I think that's a twenty-five percent increase from last year to this year of, so it's a pretty ambitious goal as well. And that's something that, you know, very clearly I heard over and over from stakeholders is the need to retain staff, and also the need to retain admin, right? Over the last few years, Oakley's administration has been changing quite a bit, so really, it's all staff, it's not just teaching staff, it's, it's every staff member at our school.
You can't see, but there's a lot of agreement behind you. So I just had a follow-up, so that's sort of the, based on your goals. Priority two, and the Oakley Green will create a strong academic culture where classroom instruction is aligned to college and career-ready standards. So if then you're going to compare that to whether students are actually meeting the grade-level standards, so if you have these aligned college and career-ready standards, do you have a metric also around whether students are actually, I'm not seeing it here, meeting those, that would be meeting those standards?
Yeah, I mean, it's really about S-BAC because the college and career-ready standards are the common core standards that are at grade level and that are, you know, considered college-ready standards. And so it would just be our S-BAC indicator. We have some just informal metrics that we've said as a team, but we, you know, I don't have that number exactly in front of me right now, but we've really focused on MAP because of where kids are coming in and looking at our data and realizing that a lot of students are coming in significantly below. And so that's not really, you know, using a grade-level measure while we want to show growth there as well. It's, it's very difficult if our students are not coming in at grade level on average. But we are also hoping that that grows as well.
So speaking of how, where the students are coming in, so great foundational work you've done this year. Is there an ongoing conversation with the elementaries that are feeding into Oakley Green so that this is, so that you're getting students who are in a different place and ready to really accelerate through middle school versus you're trying to catch them up? So I'm just kind of wondering how that alignment?
And I'll just piggyback on that for a second because that was exactly my same question. So, or even more granular than that, the MAP data shows you like the, the specific areas within a subject where your kids are coming in deficient. So sharing that information with your elementary schools?
We do meet as cohorts once a month, and that's more for instructional and professional development. But as we move into the spring, we will spend more time with feeders and, and looking at data. And so that Christina and other middle schools can talk to the elementary school principals and look at data to really start developing some intervention plans and some instructional plans for kids based on the students that are coming in and where they are.
Okay. Did you, okay. Unless somebody's got a burning question, I'm going to call it. I'm looking at the clock, and we've got three more schools. So if we want to hit the 10:00 PM goal.
Thank you.
Recommissions and resets, I assume that's fallen angels getting back on a path. And it's some future point, I'd love to see some specific examples from MAP that we learned this, and so that led to that. And also what MAP doesn't tell us, so we, strengths and weaknesses, not, not a big, not a big deal, but just to give a little more hands-on because it sounds like it's a really important tool, and I want to hear more about that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Just say thank you to your whole team. You walked into a really hard job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lent. Oscar Moreno-Gilson, Assistant Superintendent for Franklin and Grant Cohort. And I'm really proud to be here today to introduce to you Richard Smith. He was hired two weeks before the school year started. I'm really excited that we have a full team in our cohort, and so he'll take off with a presentation.
All right. Good evening, board. It's great to be here tonight with y'all. Talk about Lent a little bit tonight, and where we, where we've been and where we're planning on going. Once again, my name is Richard Smith, and thank you for those that have come by and seen us this year so far. So very similar to what Oakley Green was presenting, we kind of had three priorities. We looked at the cap goal for many of these, and also community input. Goal number one was students, teachers, and families feel safe and supported at Lent. It's been an ongoing issue for years. Safety's been an issue at Lent, discipline has kind of been an issue at Lent. And so by the end of the school year, we will have reduced our suspension rate by ten percent by having a clear system of positive behavior interventions and supports, so PBIS, and tier-one supports for all students. Tier-one supports are supports and systems that all students can experience. So it's for a hundred percent of our students, the tier-one. So right now, we're on pace to meet this goal of reducing suspensions, not just by ten percent, but we're looking more in the twenty, twenty-five percent range at this point of the year. Last year, we had about a hundred and ten suspensions. We're sitting at about twenty-seven right now. So we're definitely on pace. We hope to continue to lower that number. As a matter of fact, most of our suspensions and referrals were in the months of September and October, and since then, things have calmed down quite a bit at Lent. Students are in classrooms. We've gotten them to where they need to be, and so now we just have to continue to develop our teachers so that instruction is strong when those students are in class. So that takes us to priority two, that Lent will create a strong academic culture where classroom instruction is aligned to common core standards to prepare students for high school, college, and beyond. Very similar to Oakley Green as well, we actually collaborate and talk. Fifty percent or more of all Lent students will meet or exceed their individual growth goal on the measures of academic progress, the MAP test for language arts by the end of the third testing in May. And so we're also looking for our students to increase one level as measured on PPS rubric for writing, that's, that's part of our cap goal as well. So we're a cohort-three school at Lent, which means our focus this year is on writing in K through five. Reading is not till next year, really, but we still want to push that, and some of our teachers are piloting it this year in preparation for next year. And so when we're looking at the second round of MAP, about forty percent of our students have tested already, and I've kind of started looking at that data. So it's not super accurate yet because we only have forty percent in. About forty percent of the students have met their growth goals, so we got a lot of work to do still to hit our metric for fifty percent by the end of the year. And our priority three is the district will provide regular updates and will seek, actively seek input from parents. So we're in the process of finalizing the development of a site council that'll meet monthly to discuss problems and solve issues. We haven't had a site council at Lent for a while now, for a couple of years. So we're in that process of getting that. We have some bylaws established. So in the next week or two, there's going to be communication going out to parents about how they can become part of that with what we do. Okay, so to go into priority one, we want people, we want our students, teachers, and families to feel safe and supported. So the first one is collaborative development of Lent's core values. We, we didn't decide to do this top-down. We took this to the staff, the students, and the parents, and we, and we decided that be safe, be responsible, be respectful, be kind would be our core values at Lent. We sent out a survey to parents, they took it at conferences, we got feedback on the different areas of expectations for students. And so the Common Expectation lessons were aligned to core values, and students are taught explicitly, explicitly what it means to display value, safety, responsibility, respect, and kindness. We had these intro lessons when the students came back in January. So a lot of the stuff that we've done at Lent has been a rollout in January after we've gotten input. The community really does want to be involved in the input that goes on at Lent. They don't want things to just come down just out of nowhere. They want to have a voice in what's said, as well as the staff. Students do earn paw prints, their little rewards for, for displaying those. They can get stuff from the school store with that. Restorative conversations take place, so when the students are pulled out, we do kind of do a restorative model outside of the classroom. We're going to be working on doing training and PLCs starting in March and what restorative circles and such look like in class, so that teachers can begin to implement it there and not just outside of the classroom. And we're also implementing Mind Up in the classrooms for K through eight to increase mindfulness, to assist our students in staying with the core values. We see a lot of assumption about behavior in our building, and the assumptions lead to the student being disciplined. So we want our students, our staff, all of us, to have a more mindful approach to how we approach discipline, how we approach student misbehavior, so we can analyze what our students are doing and keep them in the classroom. The multi-tiered systems of support and, and then the PBIS are two big things. We do receive quite a bit of support from the district on MTSS. We have a TOSA that comes in at least once a week. She sits with our, our sit team, our student intervention team. She comes to our PBIS meetings, and she helps guide some of that work with us. And so once again, as we talked about, the paw prints is one way. We have a student management specialist who's been at the building for many years but is new to the role this year, who's doing a great job really working in some of those restorative conversations with the students. And we help move from tier-one to tier-two, three with the counselors if they need more, if the students need more help. And so we have a lot of one-on-one conversations with students, a lot of check-ins, check-outs, groups, outside resources we bring in to work with some of our populations that need additional help. And we do have our sit team that meets weekly to discuss students on that. That was quite interesting when we got there at the beginning of the year, we had about fifty kids that had not been met on, that were on the agenda to meet about sit. And we've actually cleared that up, and we're actually completely caught up now where we need to be on that. So it's been a lot of work from the teachers and other people on that. So this is some examples of the, the pictures don't look great on there, but just, you know, some of the hallway expectations, it was the SMS and the teachers, they were, they were the ones that really owned it, and they had small group conversations with students. The students were really engaged in the process, and, you know, they know, you can ask them if they're not following with the expectations, you can say, oh, what are we not doing here? And they can actually point and tell you, which is really powerful instead of just being like, stop doing that. So priority two is Lent will create a strong academic culture where classroom instruction is aligned to common core standards to prepare students for high school, college, and beyond. We have a lot of instructional, professional development this year, especially around writing, being that we're a cohort-three school, writing is our focus. Lucy Cockens, the Writing Writers Workshop for K-5 is really where we're trying to get down. By the end of the year, we want all of our teachers to be able to do a successful mini lesson, which is about a ten-minute lesson on a specific content, and then to be able to do a lot of check-ins and small group instruction with the students, as well as overall check-in. So our students should be writing in that time period, aligned to the curriculum and what the GVC is as well. We've been focusing on getting in classrooms and providing observations and support. We have, I believe, around thirty probationary teachers on our campus, which is quite extensive. It may be twenty-five, but it's, it's right, it's, it's high. And, and so we, me and my assistant principal are in classrooms trying to get those observations and give quality feedback to our teachers as well. We've enlisted the help of several TOSA's around the district to help with coaching as well. We've identified teachers that can really use that support to develop and grow. So we've, we've started our coaching plan, which we rolled out a couple of weeks ago right when we came back. And many of the teachers by the end of this month will start getting weekly coaching supports from district TOSA's to come in and help around reading and literacy, and then in middle school around math. Lesson plans, of course. We have our weekly professional learning communities around, one week is on EBBL writing, and the other week is supposed to be around culture and climate, especially around mindfulness to help continue to drive that home. And then our monthly staff meetings, once a month, we, we focus on equity-based balanced literacy where the TOSA comes in and does that for our teachers. In terms of intervention and supports for tier-two and tier-three students, we, we've been looking at the MAP data quite significantly. We are in the process of, we've, we've found the resources on campus to create some math intervention and more reading intervention by moving a few things and adjusting the schedule. So not this week, but next week, we're going to be rolling a few students into some of those classes to receive the extra support based off MAP, based off how they've done in the past on S-BAC, and also based on teacher recommendations. So we're going to triangulate those three points to determine which students need that intervention the most for both math and reading for grades six through eight specifically. We have a K-through-five reading specialist that goes in and usually does the push-in model with some educational assistance, but occasionally some pull-outs as well as need be. And then also our sit team has, has figured out who needs some of those supports as well. Okay, so community engagement is a really critical thing at Lent that we're continuing to develop and work on with the community input to see how we can best serve them. As I mentioned before, the site council is rolling out. We have the bylaws pretty much established now, so that communication will be going out to parents. We hope to have our elections early February, and hope to have our first site council meeting by the end of February, and then meet on a monthly basis to discuss the needs of the school and scheduling and all those things to help the school move forward. We have our PTA, they meet, they meet every month. We partner with them, we're, we're kind of helping them grow that as well. We don't just have the PTA, but we also have our Lent United Parent Group. So there's two, two parent groups that meet and discuss needs of the schools and ways that we can assist them moving forward. and ways that we can assist them moving forward. I have my monthly coffee with the principal where we meet. And it's like, it was mentioned before by Oakley Green, it's pretty informal. I have a brief presentation about what's going on. And then the other half, about 30 minutes, we take questions and we listen to what the parents have to say and take feedback from there. And so our next steps, second semester, we're going to be adding additional math and reading intervention groups for Tier Two and Tier Three using the data. Ensuring core instruction is aligned to Common Core state standards. That's one of our big focuses this year is to make sure that we're aligned to the GVC because the GVC is aligned to Common Core. Continue to pull core teachers for instructional planning days. We, they do go to training, professional development to get help with that at GVC. And to have our staff meetings and PLC time. And in the PLC, to continue to focus on Mind Up, begin restorative conversations in March, what that's going to look like, instructional planning, and working as a team. That's something that we're really working on this year at Lent. Is as a, as a, as a school staff team, how do we become a team? How do we become one together? And we're going to be working for next year a strong master schedule planning. The master schedule wasn't fully established until about a day or two before the school year started this year. So we're going to do a much better job next year of having a strong master schedule that's going to be able to meet the needs of more of our students and not just figuring it out during the year. And we're going to have strong hiring. We won't be hiring a week into the school year this next year. We're going to have ourselves fully staffed this time around. And we'll have our PD calendar aligned and ready to go to meet the needs of our students. And I believe that is it for my presentation.
That's a lot.
Come to Oregon.
Thank you.
To Portland. And we all heard the "y'all."
Sorry.
No apology is necessary. I just want to say from all this work and considering the incredible turnover and turmoil that you stepped into, this is a great framework that you've set up. And a tremendous amount of work has been done. And a tremendous amount of work needs to continue to happen. And, you know, you touched on some of those things, but really fundamental, rock-bottom first steps that are being made. And I was sorry you weren't there when I visited a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, at a district meeting. I was like, oh, I wanted to be there. Had to catch me the day I wasn't there. Yes.
Again, kudos for all the work that you're doing. I know that's a challenging school. And it sounds like things are going, you know, are going, you know, in a good direction now. So you have a large EL population there. I don't see anything, I guess, called out here. Is there a particular, I know you're going to focus on all students, but wondering too, you know, how you look at specific needs for disaggregated, like disaggregate the data and look at the needs and kind of balance.
So specifically around our Els, we do have a high percentage of that. We have three ESL teachers or ELL teachers on our campus. One that focuses on K-2, one that's 3-5, and one that's 6-8. And we've moved away from the pull-out model. We really don't feel that works. And so those teachers actually push into those classrooms and give support to the whole class as a whole. And then also individual support to those students on a need-be basis in that class.
Are we, as a system, then, helping EL teachers learn about the co-teaching methods and practicing? Is that support that we give system-wide to your EL teachers?
So we're still working on what that co-teaching looks like. And that's something that I think is a struggle nationwide is what that co-teaching looks like in a classroom. So we could definitely use support with that.
Good to know. Thank you.
For the superintendent. So the 30 probationary teachers. So if you're an administrator in a school that has a disproportionate number of probationary teachers and just what's required to provide sort of the in-class observations and the coaching. From a district standpoint, what sort of additional supports do we give or provide for schools that have sort of this disproportionate, I don't want to say burden because I think it's probably one of the most rewarding parts of the job to be sort of supporting probationary teachers as they start their careers. But what sort of support do we give principals just knowing that that's a, just the time and the capacity needed?
I don't think any of us want to see any school impacted with that level of, you know, teachers that are new to the profession. We always want to see sort of a mix of folks on the career ladder in any given school, supporting one another. At Lent, we, in addition to Principal Smith, we do have an assistant principal there as well. You heard about some of the central TOSAs that are coming by and working with teachers in a variety of different areas. But it is a challenge. I mean, having been one of those principals who, you know, had a lot of newer teachers, we need to free up our principals to be able to spend the quality time in classrooms. These are some of the structures that everyone has to sort of share ownership for so that there's stability and ability to focus on instruction. I'm impressed that, you know, we're already initiating a lot of those conversations. But, you know, we've been having a lot of conversations around what level of administrative capacity is going to be required because we certainly want to see Lent grow and we want to see retention. And so, you know, it's an opportunity to help nurture folks that are new to the profession. But this is why we have them working so closely with our principal supervisors so that they're coming back with a lot of this kind of information. And if we're seeing a pattern of some schools, you know, having that additional sort of responsibility, what are the additional supports that could be helpful? Is it a second AP? Is it our master teachers or mentor teachers who are providing beginning teacher and induction support that we know is critical in the first couple of years so they stay beyond two or three? Those are some of the supports we would want to see. Did you want to add to that, Oscar, at Lent specifically?
On addition to that, we provide six days for the principal and the vice principal to take the time to write up their evaluations or to get into classrooms and make observations. And we do that for all of our Title I schools. Yeah, we provide substitutes for them.
For new teachers, kind of an induction program?
There's still a mentor program. My first-year teachers and many second-year teachers have a mentor as well.
I'm sorry. So you're saying they get a substitute so they can, so somebody else is leading their building and managing things in the building?
Correct, yes.
For six days?
Yes.
You're talking about the principal and the vice principal? Right, okay.
Yeah.
So they get a principal.
So one of the other challenges you're facing is your co-located program. You've got one strand of Spanish and two neighborhood.
Correct.
And I know, we noticed the neighborhood class sizes were pretty small.
Especially in K-2, they're pretty small.
Yeah. And you have, it looked like a lot of Latino students who are not in the DLI program. Is that true?
Yes, there's a, there are some that are not in the DLI program. Some of that goes to the district processes for lottery and applications and all, and cap sizes on the DLI numbers also.
And I can add to that. So we do have, as you know, for the native English speakers that want to get into dual immersion, they're shopping around, they're going to, from Kinder Connect to Kinder Connect. For our native Spanish speakers, we actually have to recruit them. We have Yolanda who goes and knocks on doors and explains the program. I think that in previous years, we had the English-only movement and the system or the culture didn't want us to be bilingual. And so we have a lot of families that don't understand or don't believe that being bilingual is an asset. So we have to really go out and recruit. Yolanda was out sick during this time last year. And so we couldn't really go out and recruit all of the families. And then with the transition of administrators, we weren't able to get, and we're not able to get all of the families to actually buy in into this model. But we're working on it.
Okay, would there have been room for all the Latino kindergartners to be in DLI if they so chose to?
I believe our DLI classes are at the level or one away from their level for the most part. Especially in kindergarten, first grade, and especially in the K-5.
There was enough space for all of our neighborhood families. And so, but because not all of them got in, they were able to let non-neighborhood families into the program that were native Spanish speakers.
Okay, that seems like something we ought to change or look at changing. It's, I mean, if our goal is to better serve those students, then make sure all the neighborhood kids are served in a DLI program in their neighborhood school seems...
Shout out to David Porter, who just sent us all some very interesting data on specifically this point. And I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
Both of you. Oh, you have it, Oscar.
Yeah, and I had it pulled up on my phone to review, so.
I'm going to give a two-minute warning. So Paul, did you have a?
I would just like to make the point that we know that far and away, our most effective way of reaching our ELL students is with a DLI program. And reiterating what Director Bailey had to say. But again, I continue to hear fabulous things about what you're doing.
Thank you.
I would only add, and a faculty that's representative of the student demographic, a staff that generally, you know, is culturally responsive and has strategies for making sure second language learners can access content, that we have a school culture that appreciates their culture. That, I mean, I could go down the list. So there are a lot of things we can do to make sure that it is a welcoming, positive place for learning.
Just to follow up, I was going to ask that question too. At schools that have high EL populations, really, how many teachers are trained or have background in the instructor, particularly branding teachers? Do they come in with endorsements or any coursework on teaching English learners? It's, we know the answer.
So most, I will say, I am impressed in this district by our DLI program that we have that they do offer a lot of support for those teachers who are DLI teachers specifically. Not so much for the neighborhood side teachers because they're in a different thing. But they do offer a ton of support for those teachers. I do see them coming back and employing strategies in there.
But I think for the neighborhood teachers, because you have, continue to have that diverse population too. So it's just something to think of, you know, as a system.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Okay, I'm going on. I'm going to call it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have two more schools. So I'm going to limit it to 15 minutes apiece, and that'll bring us to 10:00 PM.
Good evening again. Now we have Dr. Kathleen Elwood from Roseway Heights Middle School. And I cannot say enough about the work that she has done to open Roseway Heights Middle School. It's truly impressive. So, Dr. Elwood?
Thank you. And it's actually been a team effort. I can't take all the credit. Our goals and priorities were established based on a lot of the groundwork that we did last year. If you remember, we held monthly community meetings and gathered input from the community. And based on the input that the community gave us, my school site council chose 10 areas where we thought, that we needed to work on, top 10 priorities. And then we had our community vote on their top three choices at our back-to-school night. At our back-to-school night, we had posters up. And basically, anybody with a pulse who walked by got to vote as to what their top three priorities were, including our students and our staff. And so we got some great feedback that evening. We had over 600 people attend our back-to-school night, which was a great turnout. And so the priorities that came up oddly enough matched what our data also said we needed because we also spent time last year meeting with our feeder schools to examine the data of our incoming students and determine what we needed. So that was great to see that, that those two things melded together. So school climate, I'm not going to go through and read every word for you, but school climate is a focus, as well as making sure that our students are getting assistance as they need it. That was a huge priority for our Latino families who actually wrote their comments in Spanish, is not just the climate, but wanting their students to be able to read and write and getting the support they needed. And last but not least is having a shared vision and equity, that community building. My community, if you remember, decided that they weren't just concerned about our students becoming students, but they're very concerned about how our students will contribute to the community in the future. So moving along. So for school culture and climate, we have a number of things going on. Most of the things on this particular slide are centered around our culturally responsive tiered Fideli inventory, which we do twice a year. It's been mentioned in the previous presentations. And our school climate handbook. So we do have a school climate team composed of parents, teachers, and now we've drafted a student or been able to convince a student to stay for pizza. And so, hey, whatever it takes. And also they're realizing the value of their input, so intrinsic motivators also. And so in addition to reviewing our handbook, which we are doing again this month, we are also looking, doing a monthly review of our common area data without student names to determine if we need to put in additional structures and systems to help support students in being successful in our common areas. We also have staff professional development that occurred during the additional pre-service days we received and is ongoing through the year. We did a training, a classroom management training called CHAMP's Training through Safe and Civil Schools, which basically teaches teachers to have clear expectations for each activity they do in the classroom, as well as positive reinforcement within the classroom. So that they shouldn't just depend on those school tickets that we use as school-wide rewards, but each teacher needs to have a comprehensive, positive reinforcement plan and give students non-contingent attention. And for our students who are trauma-impacted, many of them, on that non-contingent attention, just appreciating them as human beings, regardless of their actions, is absolutely vital for our success. The other staff development that we have going on that I'm really excited about is training through the University of Oregon. Dr. Kent McIntosh is bringing a team once a month. I didn't want one-shot training, but he's bringing a team once a month to our school to work with our teachers on implicit bias and recognizing when they are experiencing vulnerable decision points, when they're making, there are times in the day when we're hungry, when we're tired, when implicit bias could impact our decision-making. And often that happens in disciplinary situations. And so they're teaching us de-escalation strategies for adults, not just for students. So that training's ongoing. And then we will be doing monthly walkthroughs, peer observations to look for examples of best practice in those strategies as we learn them. So we're excited about that training. And then we're also continuing to receive support from our MTSS department you've heard a lot about. Some of the groundwork we did last year was to create a multi-tiered systems of support rubric that addressed six different areas. One was externalized behaviors. Those are the things you see reflected in office disciplinary referrals or referrals. The second was internalized behaviors. Those are the behaviors, the students who often slip below the surface. And we determine those students using something called a universal screener that was developed by Dr. Kathleen Lane. And that's something our teachers do to determine if a student needs additional support. We also look at reading. We look at math. We look at tardies and we look at attendance. Because our school has such a late time, a late start time, 9:15, many of our students are responsible for getting themselves to school. So that attendance and being on-time piece, it's really important for us to have positive reinforcements as well as some corrective consequences if needed. Last but not least, we are also field-testing social-emotional curriculum through caring school communities through our advisory program. And so that includes not only a reteaching of common area expectations, but it's looking at the values that we feel are important for students to have and which are celebrated. Assembly students are chosen and rewarded for showing those values, those positive values. And we've been doing things like tardy recognition program this Friday where anyone who had no tardies last week gets to participate in a free time. And we had 483 out of our 577 students actually make that target. So we're really excited about that. That's a huge improvement for us. All right, I better move on since we have our 15-minute. Looking at our academics, we wanted to make sure our students, looking at our data from last year, when our teams looked at the data, what we saw was that over 60% of our students were Tier Three in reading, meaning they need intensive supports, individualized supports. And over 65% were Tier Three in math, meaning, you know, individualized support in math. So with that knowledge, what I did with our equity team funding or with our equity money, as well as our Title I funding, we are a Title I school, is I created a student intervention team. Because one of the challenges I had at Irvington, my previous assignment... Because one of the challenges I had at Irvington, my previous assignment, was that our student intervention team wasn't meeting as frequently as possible, because it was dependent on using staff meeting time in order for teachers to participate. I had no Title I funding to pay anyone extra hourly to help support that. So I created a team, a student intervention specialist, a literacy coach, and a math coach. And then we additionally have a full-time student assistance coordinator from the Family and Community Engagement Department, who is absolutely invaluable. And our team is able to meet together with people from each discipline and our counselors to look at student data and our MTSS rubric, and see if any of our students are falling into the category of tier two or tier three, needing additional supports, in other words. In addition to that student intervention team, we also have a SART team, a Student Attendance Response Team, that specifically looks at just attendance and tardies. As I said, it's absolutely crucial for us, and we're doing things, including home visits, to try to connect with families who have been difficult to contact. And we also have a school discipline team that reviews disciplinary data. And so the attendance team and the student discipline team take their information to the weekly student intervention team meeting. And what we're hoping is that that will allow us to use data to make sure that none of our students slip through the cracks, basically. And working along, obviously, community engagement is a huge priority for us. In addition to our school site council, we have a transitional PTA. And what I mean by transitional is that, as a community, we want to get more of our families involved, so that our PTA and other organizations are more representative of our student population. Currently, it's primarily white families who attended Roseway Heights specifically and feel space, feel safe in that physical space. So I have parents who are sitting in temporarily until we can get more involvement from other areas of our community, that more continuous involvement. And in order to try to connect with those communities, we're holding community meetings off-site at places such as the Hacienda Housing Development. Tomorrow night, Lee and Roseway Heights are holding a joint meeting at Broadway Vantage, another housing development on Broadway, by the MAC station there on Eighty Second Street. And we're also partnering with ERCO to do things at the Asian Family Center. So these are all areas where our families already feel comfortable, and that's what we're hoping is that we can interconnect with those agencies and locations where families feel safe. Because what we found is that a number of our families did not fill out Free and Reduce Lunch applications this year, because they did not feel safe doing so. And so that's a huge concern. And so just making sure students eat is going to require quite a bit of groundwork. What we've all, what we also have is principals' coffees, both in the morning and the evening, and although it's decaf in the evenings. Parents Interested in Equity Group, which is a group of parents committed to building cross-cultural awareness across our community. And one branch of that group is currently doing white affinity training, which is white ally training, on a monthly basis with a local trainer. What we've discovered is that there have been some schisms created between some of our communities and the district based on past actions. And so I've honestly found that, while all these are fine, you know, having meetings set and announcing things, the best way to connect with our families is just that interpersonal connection. And with one group from Hacienda, for example, we've realized that the best inroad is going to be through dance, as strange as that sounds. I'm a belly dance instructor, and I met a parent who is a folklorico dancer, and we're gonna do joint lessons and draw in families that way. So it's unconventional, I know, but we've got to connect with our communities as human beings. And any of you, welcome to put on a hip scarf and join us. Moving along. So.
Lead by example.
Right, that's right. So, next steps is to continue adding reading and intervention groups. We are seeing some gains with some of our students, and what we're seeing is that the MAP assessment, you've heard a lot about it already, but they actually have a lovely graph that actually shows students the progress they've made. And that visual, we find, is a huge motivator in and of itself, is for students to see their growth. We're doing a number of different instructional days, using our Title I funding. One is going to be collaborating with our ESL teachers. We have seventy-nine ESL students, or ELD students, and we want to collaborate so that teachers can learn what each individual student needs to be successful. We're gonna do the same for our students with individualized education plans and 504 plans, as coordinating with case managers, our general educators. We're gonna be doing department days, and I was gonna really focus on the scope and sequence in the GVC, but what I've realized is that many of my teachers did not have consistent training in the Common Core State Standards. So like any teacher, when you realize there's a gap, you've got to back up and fill in that gap before you can move forward. We're also gonna be taking some days to look at the MAPS assessment scores. I don't want just my coaches looking at the scores and determining who needs that extra intervention. I want teachers to really become familiar with those scores and look at the strands where we're seeing consistent inconsistencies in the scores, where we can improve and where we're doing well already. We're gonna continue trying to get community members on board, and the master schedule is a huge, huge challenge for us. We are also a dual-language school. We have Spanish this year, sixth-grade students from Scott Elementary. But in two years, we also add Vietnamese. So we're kind of doing a five-year plan, where we're looking at our student enrollment over the next five years, and how the Spanish DLI program and co-located Vietnamese DLI program is going to impact hiring, where students are housed, and just what our program will look like. So we're trying to plan ahead as much as possible, as well as continue to work with our feeder schools. We're really, we really, 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 not just our elementary schools, but our high school in Madison, we really want to create a K through twelve continuum. So we are really looking forward to the time. Dr. Simpson has talked with us about having time to plan together as a collective, as a cluster. We're really looking forward to that time, because we need to keep our students in the Madison cluster. That's it. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
That was fast, I know. Fast talker. Yes.
Sounds like instead of ten, you went for twenty.
Okay, so, we're rapidly running out of time, so I don't want you to feel like we're not interested.
Well, I would love to have you show up. And we have a principal's coffee this Friday morning at nine o'clock. You're welcome to join us. Or next Wednesday evening at six-thirty, or you can come tomorrow to Broadway Vantage at six o'clock and see it all for yourselves. So please join us. Thank you, it's a team effort.
Okay, hang up before, we have one question.
Oh, question, question.
I'm wondering if you could talk about what would be most valuable in terms of the articulation between your feeder schools and then the work that you do with Madison? I know that you did a lot of work in your, the year before, your sort of planning year of going into those school communities and meeting with the families, but what would be most important from, to get from the district to support that? Because I think this has been a sort of a, a long-term issue in the Madison cluster, that there's been all these feeders into Madison, sort of a disjointed middle grades experience. So what is it that we can do to be helpful or supportive or?
Yeah, well, what helped us last year was simply having planning time, was being able to, one of the things that we were granted last year was funding for substitutes to, or for people who wanted to meet in the summer or after school, to do planning together. That's honestly what helped us the most, is being able to have that opportunity to collaborate. And I see Madison not just as my feeder schools, but Harrison Park also feeds into Madison. And it would be lovely to have time to align with Harrison Park and the feeder schools for Harrison Park also, since we're really all part of that Madison family, unless there are boundary changes coming up that may change that. But up and, as of right now, we are all Madison schools. We've also thought a lot about Riggler possibly being a partner, because they, a lot of our families live at Hacienda, attend Riggler or Scott. And so just doing things that are open to that community also, since that's also a DLI school that connects with us or partners with us.
Yeah, there's, looking ahead towards our boundary work, and there might be some, we should look at, at some realignments there, potentially around Riggler, around Harrison Park becoming a middle school, or creating a, dealing with that. And that's also, applies to Lent as well, going forward. That having Lent as a K five would allow us to do, better serve those students, I think, in.
Okay, I'm gonna call it?
Yeah.
Go away. Of course, it's a pleasure.
I'm really excited to introduce to you Senior Director, Dr. Corey Seymour. And he's gonna be introducing the principal, and something that we're doing in our cohort, Franklin and Grant Cohort, we're dividing and conquering, so I'm taking all of Lent, and he's taking all of Harriet Tubman.
Good evening. Seems like the time has been well-spent. I first want to say, guys, I admire what you guys do as board members. It takes a lot to come and go to work all day and come to these meetings all night, so I just want to let you know, I really appreciate that. Beside me is, is a wonderful, what's that? A wonderful, wonderful principal. Beside me is Natasha Butler. She's the principal over Harriet Tubman, so I'm gonna give it to her and let her go, do a presentation, okay?
Good evening, everyone. You know, it's past my bedtime. Just kidding. All right. In front of you, I know that you have this presentation, and for the sake of time, I would just like to kind of accelerate it. As you all know, we moved into Harriet Tubman at an accelerated rate, I would like to say overnight. And our focus, or should I say, for us, our goal has been to establish a strong school climate. And with that being said, also establish protocols and non-negotiables. And so realizing that with my inherited team, anxiety and excitement fill the air. So as a school leader, I had to figure out a way to kind of calm the waters, so that we could be ready to serve students. And so we walked in with a motto that I created, and that was simply to transfer no BODs. And so we could not worry about things of the past, but we had to come with a fresh perspective that we were going to build brick by brick to create a strong middle school program. With that in mind, our school climate team, administration team, really worked with staff over, was, the work has been ongoing, monthly, daily. And things that we talk about, that we like to reinforce daily with our staff, is number one, to sweat the small stuff, interrupt chaos, every day is an emergency. And talk less, teach more. And to not be afraid to talk about the issues of race and equity, as we are providing instruction for our students. If you look at the PowerPoint, it basically says that our goal is to, number one, greater awareness of cultural differences and how race impacts a school community. We are forty-one percent African-American in our building, and that has been a cultural shift for staff and students, as far as how do we engage, how do we move students, how do we close the achievement gap. Knowledge of trauma-informed practices, increase opportunities to celebrate milestones, big or small, and consistent school-wide expectations, really teaching our students how to be good citizens. And then from an academic instructional standpoint, build strong learning communities, increase intervention support, you heard a lot about that tonight, that is also our goal, increase academic rigor, improve classroom management techniques, and differentiate instruction. Successes, instructional, professional development, staff training and intervention. We talked a lot about intervention, but realized that a lot of the staff had not have PD around intervention. So once we identified students who needed more support, did the teachers have the tools and the expertise to know how to offer that support? And so with the help of our instructional coach and one of my educational assistants, that was their focus, to provide training to my teachers in ELA around the, the issue of reading proficiency. And this semester, starting tomorrow, we will actually begin our small intervention groups for all of our students that have been identified. Interventions and support, I also would like to add that I received additional funding to be able to hire another educational assistant. So it will allow me to use my instructional coach, I already had an educational assistant, and then one more part-time person, again, to conduct that small group work. Flexible scheduling to allow for remediation, study skills, and secondary and post-secondary preparation. We have a partnership with OSU. They're putting together Beaver Night. They are working with us to really help us to define protocols and, should I say, engagement around the importance of being prepared and being ready, and also coming in and working with our teachers to give them that perspective. Because oftentimes, they don't know really what's ahead. They haven't had an opportunity to be in high school or college settings of recent times. And so really getting teachers to come out of their comfort zone, to be able to know exactly how to plan for the future, as well as for our students, with our students in mind. MTSS, we are starting that work actually within the next week with our fit assessment, and that department will be coming in and providing our team with professional development support as well. And then our discipline team meets twice a month to review individual student discipline data and ways in which we can improve the climate and the culture of our school. Harriet Tubman, community engagement, when I looked at that PowerPoint, I was like, I must have been asleep when I put it together, because there are other community partners that I failed to include. But other programs that are in our schools include Caldera Arts, NEA, the I Will Program, and OSU Educational Opportunities Program, Winter Hawks, yes, or additional programs that are also in our building. Strong PTA group, a lot of that was birthed last year. I was able to develop a parent ambassador group, and so a lot of those parents were actively involved in helping me to establish a PTA group. And so that's off and running. And then we have the Maurice Lucas Foundation and Self-Enhancement, which are also housed in our building. Most recently, in-school reflection. So you've probably heard this term, in-school suspension. Didn't like the word suspension, so I changed it to in-school reflection. And it is a standalone classroom opportunity for those students who may get off the bus, for example, and are just not ready to start the school day. They need a soft landing, a place to go, with someone to talk to, to kind of propel them, you know, for their day, to get them started, to jumpstart. And so we found ourselves just putting out fires and having a lot of side conversations with students. And really what they needed was a concentrated amount of time with an adult, to be able to talk about issues that were going on, family life, struggles in the classroom, things that they didn't always want to make public. And so that has been very successful in our building. It's probably been going on for now for about three weeks. Next steps, increase leadership opportunities for students. This semester, we integrated two leadership classes. We want to increase student voice. It's their school, we want to hear from them. Establish a Harriet Tubman student store. Strong alignment with secondary and post-secondary institutions. Special, special, excuse me, professional development and special education systems. That is an area of weakness, as far as inclusion and how we service students with IEPs. And so we really want to work with our staff in, in that area, as well as, you heard earlier about TAG. We really have been pushing our teachers to really take an active interest in identifying talented and gifted students, particularly students of color, that are definitely underrepresented in our TAG programs. And before and after-school tutoring. And fortunately, we have been blessed to have many different organizations, from the Urban League to Emmanuel Hospital, to various universities of students that want to come and offer support. The trick is coordination, because those individuals also have to be managed in your building. But really utilizing the resources that we have been blessed with to create tutoring opportunities for our students, to be able to capture what we cannot capture in the course of a school day. To close out, in our second semester, is to finish out the year strong, just like my other team members that presented before me, develop a master schedule. Next year, we will inherit a Mandarin program. And so just today, we talked about what that will look like, what supports we need to have. And so just today, we talked about what that will look like, what supports we need to have in place so that that program will be foundationally strong in our building. We will be conducting fifth-grade open houses that will be led by our student leadership classes. Continued work around guaranteed viable curriculum. And stronger collaboration with our feeder high schools to really prepare our eighth graders for high school. As you know, I mentioned to you in a previous presentation, our eighth graders would have had three transitions, to go from a K-8 with me for one year and now into high school. And so we want to make sure that we don't leave them behind as they make their transition into high school. So, that's that. I did it, 10 o'clock.
Okay, you did it, 10 o'clock. I don't know that we're gonna do this, but, big question?
I have one quick question, Principal Butler. If you could just speak a little bit to the cohesion of this school community in terms of the students coming from several different feeders and just that aspect of your school climate?
Yes, I mean, the best way to kind of give you numbers, to kind of set a framework. I have 488 students. 41% of my students are African-American, 30% white, 15% Latino, and 10% multiracial. And all in one building whereby, in my feeder schools, which are Irvington, Saban, King, and Voice Elliott, they don't all have those same demographics. And so I also, as you know, inherited those teachers coming from those four feeder schools. And if they had a desire to come to Harriet Tubman and they had the tenure and the endorsements as emerged, I had to inherit them. And so with that, it's just, it's just a learning curve for everyone to perhaps maybe going and being in a classroom for a significant period of time when 70% of your kids are at grade level, whereas you may walk into my building and only 30% are at grade level. And you've never been challenged to that degree, so what does that look like? And it's scenarios like that. Not knowing how to deal with families that have severe trauma. How to connect, how to create safe classroom community where everyone feels included. And so we've been working, I have a wonderful restorative justice coordinator that works inside the classrooms with teachers around helping them to build community. And also to support teachers. And so we spend time helping teachers to repair injury. So when students feel disconnected from their teachers or if that teacher feels like they can't reach a student, then we create a space for them to talk. Because student is not going anywhere and neither is the teacher. So how do we, how do we keep momentum strong for the betterment of the whole? So, I don't know if that answered your question?
What did your teacher demographics end up to be?
So, off the top of my head, I have about 31, 32 teachers. One African-American teacher, one biracial teacher, and pretty, one Hawaiian, and one Asian. And the rest are all white. My support staff is a little bit more diverse. But as far as my teaching staff, not very diverse at all.
So I want to thank you for all the work you've done this year because I know not only were you building sort of an academic and a cultural foundation at the school, but also just the whole issues with the facilities. I know that just was another added piece to the complexity of the move-in and the transition into the building. So thanks to you and your staff. Just a question about the, if we're thinking ahead into this next year's budget cycle or just our policy, what are some things that we could do that would be most helpful to support you and your staff, or the things that you want to accomplish, or things that you would view as such the biggest barriers?
That's a loaded question.
And I think something that helps with that is, as we go throughout the year, I came to Tubman and I, with Oscar and I talking, one of the reasons why I wanted to embrace Tubman is because I have a background in supporting schools that are unique like Tubman. Tubman is like a case study in itself. And I think kind of knowing what you're gonna need right now may be a little bit premature because we hadn't, we were just going into the second semester of the school year. So we have a very limited amount of data to go off of right now. So I think as we move on through the year, we'll be able to say, hey, this is something that we need as we continue to work together and I can continue to coach her moving along with some of the barriers and obstacles that she's facing.
Well, one thing that comes to mind from the data that you've already presented tonight, what you've talked about is you have like a need for literacy. And when you have so many kids that need literacy interventions, I mean, it really goes back to how can corps start taking care of that? But most secondary teachers aren't necessarily trained in literacy.
Correct.
So, I mean, that would be something that we can see already would be in need, as an example, I would think.
And going back to Director Brim Edwards' earlier comment or question about student engagement, we know that this is a huge problem in all of our middle schools. And also, Principal Butler, as you referenced, classes that articulate onto high school. As a comment for all four of our principals here tonight, I've been disappointed to see that you have not been able to offer more electives, more things that would engage students beyond the core offerings. And I hope that adding more is certainly something that we could do in the coming year.
Yes, and I would also like to say that I cannot speak to all of the programming of my team, middle school team members, but we have a robotics engineering program, we have a strong art program, we have a band program, we have a dance program. We have a leadership team program. And so I think we have some, we have a STEM program, STEM elective. So we have some elective choices for our students. We have a seven-period day that allows students to have at least two elective choices. And in the second semester, we were able to survey students, number one, and also examine what did not work in our first semester, which is how our leadership class was birthed. And so that we will launch beginning tomorrow. And so we do see the importance of elective choices. We are going to be very intentional in creating a survey for incoming fifth graders that we will pass on to our fifth grade school, feeder schools, to give them an opportunity to share with us what it is that they want. We made an attempt to do that last year. Some students, some schools were able to do it much more comprehensively than others. So we didn't feel like we had a clear snapshot. And so based off of lessons learned, it is our goal to begin to customize a program that really speaks to the needs and the desires of the students in our, in our school community.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So there isn't enough time, but at some future point, I want, these presentations were great and meaty. Really appreciate what's going on at all the schools. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And would like you to return, I mean, I think, a discussion about what's going on with bullying in our middle schools. I'd be interested in that. You know, I understand how you frame it in terms of the structure you're trying to set up. And I'd also like to know what's the reality that you see going on and the challenges?
Well, long and short, I can close out with saying that it's not so much in our community bullying as it is social media. And so oftentimes, we are dealing with issues that do not start in my building. They start before school and after school. And it's via, forgive me, I'm not a part of it, is via Snapchat, Instagram, house party, you name it. And so young people do not know the power of their words. And so when information is translated incorrectly, it then plays out in the classroom. It plays out in the hallways at recess. And so it's not birthed inside the hallways of Harriet Tubman. A lot of times, it comes into the doors. And so, and we are left to get down to the bottom of it. And then we find out that a lot of it is not rooted in Harriet Tubman, it's rooted in after hours. So there is a parenting issue that I think also needs to be addressed. And really talking about the ill effects of social media and how it does impact learning and a school climate and culture.
Thanks.
Okay.
In the future, I'd certainly love to have the student support team talk about some of the work in this area around social media, literacy, and bullying. And these are all big, important topics.
And it'd be great to hear from some of our student leaders at the middle schools because all of you are developing student leadership teams.
Sure, if I can just offer sort of a closing sort of to this part of the program. I think last year, you recall, we set some pretty audacious goals, open to comprehensive middle schools, pay attention with some more intensive care and attention for others, you know, a couple of other schools. So you heard from all of those tonight. So we opened the door, but that was just the beginning. And a semester in, this mid-year check, I think, hopefully what you heard is similar kinds of work happening in all of these schools. The only thing that varies is where are they on the continuum? This is why a question like, we don't want to get 79 unique budget asks. If we're, if we're all sort of following a particular theory of action, the resource that you're prepared for to impact on your conditions and, you know, the unique sort of style of the, of the school sort of will feed into a broader plan for differentiating supports to our schools so that a clear definition of a quality middle school has all of those equitable components and access to electives and the things that we want to see. But what you heard tonight, hopefully, is a pretty strong foundation setting for a very small amount of time. I have to give kudos again to, you know, this work is impossible unless you just have outstanding school leaders. I think you heard, you heard that was the case here this evening and the work that their teams are doing. So even if it's a batch of all new teachers, the fact that they are building collective agency and efficacy in their buildings is admirable. So I'll just say, keep up the good work. I'll embarrass you again on Thursday at our leadership meeting for what you shared here this evening. So stay tuned because, you know, we have a lot more work to do, but we're on our way, I think.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to comment on one of your points about the strong principal leadership here. You can, you can get up, Natasha. But, you know, when we set out to embark on this work, this was one of the most important aspects that we identified is that how critical it is to have strong principal leadership and also strong central support for our principals. And this has been, to me, some of the most transformational work in this district so far this year. So it was incredibly gratifying to hear from each of you and not just because of the content of the work and the rigor, but also the way each of you express how personally identified you are with your communities. It's we, it's meeting in the housing developments, it's meeting at hacienda, it's, you know, everything you just talked about, Natasha, in terms of your many partnerships, Principal Butler. So this is, these are the ingredients that we needed in order for this work to start to take root. So it's really gratifying.
And all levels of the organization have to work in aligned way. Because I think what you hear in their journey right now is there are issues of human capital, there's issues of core curriculum, there's issues of, and so we have a responsibility centrally to sort of support our schools in those ways. And so we're all, we're all going to keep focused on continuous improvement and getting better so that we're offering that support. But thank you all for what you're doing on the ground, and we're going to try to keep doing our part here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And we almost made the 10:00 PM deadline, but, almost. So the next item is the business agenda. And we're going to reconvene briefly as a regular board meeting so that we can vote on the business agenda. Ms. Houston, are there any changes in the business agenda?
Yes, there is one. On page three of your revised business agenda, the Black Parent Initiative, you'll actually vote on next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Moore? I'd like to suggest just a recess for a minute or two because we might need to have an agenda item added on board travel.
All right, we got a recess for two minutes. It's, I mean, for board travel, I would state it has to be approved. Board travel.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, tomorrow, oh, I didn't even think, yeah, tomorrow.
Okay, while we're preparing a new resolution, do we have any public comment?
We do, we have two. We have Lori Lyons-Lockman and Gabrielle Bolivar-Sartain.
Hi, my name's Lori Lyons-Lockman, and I'm a parent of a seventh grader at Oakley Green and have been attending the site council meetings for the last two years. I am thankful that we have middle schools in the Jefferson Cluster and thankful that my student is part of the Oakley Green family. I'm here tonight because of the past. I'm here tonight because in the past, PPS has had a track record of abandoning initiatives and programs after three years. My fear is that this will happen at Oakley Green. Not only do we need stability in leadership, we need stability in FTE and more district support. This year is true, a true start for Oakley. Prior to this year, we have gone through a principal, several interim principals. Last year, we lost over half our staff. Currently, only 31% of our staff have been at the school since 2016. Policies have been developed and have been abandoned. The district has made promises that have not come through. We have seen caregivers pull their children out of Oakley Green for reasons related to safety and academics. Our school is constantly used in the press as an example of failure. Our site council meetings are filled with discussion of data that supports all of this. But tonight, you heard from our new principal, Christina Howard. Ms. Howard and her staff are truly starting from scratch and setting a new tone at Oakley Green around expectations of students and staff. We have watched her jump in and tackle policies through the school, especially around safety and academics. We have seen her and her staff push into classrooms and work with teachers and grow, to grow in their positions. We have seen her work on positive behavior systems for students. We have seen her report out to Oakley Green community with transparency and try to bring us together as a leader should. and try to bring us together as a leader should. For the first time, the culture at Oakley is becoming student-centered. This is a critical time for Oakley. Our teachers and staff and students need to keep Oakley Green, need you to keep Oakley Green as a priority. Consistency is key, and losing FTE on any level will continue to hurt our students. Oakley Green is not on fire, but we have a long way to go. And our students need your support.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gabrielle Mercedes-Bolivar. I am the parent of a current Oakley Green Middle School student, three OG graduates, and two future OG students. Christina, Principal Christina Howard is appreciated. This is the first principal we have had at OG that is an instructional leader and understands the importance of students' social, emotional, functional, and academic needs and the systems that support them, including MTSS, PBIS, UDL, RJ, et cetera. She understands the value of student data, particularly formative assessments, how to use data to inform instruction, creating intervention classes for gaps in previous instruction, how to use data in classroom observation to determine teacher professional development needs. OG is on its third years of middle school again, and our fourth principal. It is our hope that our current principal, Christina Howard, will be able to stay for three years, dare we ask for five, that it will continue to, that it will take to continue to create and implement systems, analyze data, and create a positive school, white culture, and community. What we know from our follow map data is students in sixth grade are coming into Oakley approximately one grade level below in reading and two-plus grade levels below in math. All grades are coming in below the national average. Sixth grade is coming in the furthest behind. Two-plus grade level below in math is a significant academic gap that our students must overcome and our teachers must teach too. This requires excellence in math instruction, excellence in intervention math strategies, professional development for math teachers, and a budget that reflects this math gap and a commitment to ensuring that our current OG students arrive in high school at a grade level and that our elementary school feeders are evaluated using the same maps data to strengthen academic core content, direct instruction, and that our elementary students are arriving at middle school at or above grade level. For decades, PPS has had a history of creating short-term initiatives without clear metrics to measure outcomes. With Oakley in our third years of middle school, it is imperative that we not become one of these three-year initiatives. This will take a strong budget commitment to ensure that our students receive access to the direct instruction they need and deserve. Since Principal Howard's arrival at Oakley Green, we have had, for the first time, open and transparent communication. Regular site council meetings, regular parent-principal coffee meetings, detailed map data, clear student and staff expectations, the development of systems. Principal Howard is collecting and analyzing accurate and reliable student behavior data for the first time. Prior data was not reliable or recorded consistently. I am here tonight to ask that Oakley continue to be an investment priority of the district, professional development and staff retention continue to be a priority and budget investment. Our unique special education programs with two CB feeders into Oakley be more than a staffing ratio in a budget and reflect student individual's social, emotional, functional, and academic needs. That PPS revisit the prior unfulfilled budget commitments by former senior leadership that included family engagement and communication support. And lastly, I ask that the district evaluate the history of George and Lane Middle Schools that also serve a high percentage of underserved students. Evaluate their map data, where the gaps are, with strategic investments they need, and ensure that with Oakley, our students are elevated with a commitment to stable leadership and economic resources. Our students deserve a free, appropriate, public education of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Okay, so, I think I'm going to entertain a motion.
No. There's no. Okay. So, I have a draft amendment to the resolution. Ms. Houston, can I get a resolution number?
It'll be five, seven, nine, six.
So, resolution five, seven, nine, six. The board approves travel by Directors Rosen to Seattle, Directors Constam and Brim Edwards to San Francisco for a vision process learning journey, and Directors Moore and Anthony to travel to Washington DC for the National School Boards Association Conference. Period. Except for, I'm going to ask Director Bailey and Espaza Brown whether I should be adding you in.
If you want to cover the cost of my virtual journey.
Your copy. I, I believe the rule is it's only if it's out of state. So.
Yeah.
So, we don't need to add, okay. So, do you need me to read the amendment?
No.
Is this an amendment or a resolution?
It's a, it's a.
It's an amendment to the.
Business agenda, but it's a resolution.
It's a freestanding resolution. We need to approve all board travel. So, I'm going to reread it because there's a slight change.
Director Brim Edwards?
Yes.
I'm also going to Seattle with Director Rosen.
Great, okay.
So, Director Anthony's travel, as well as my travel to the National School Boards Association, is being paid for by OSBA, the Oregon School Boards Association.
So, I thought we still had to approve it. It's just, there's a separate process for approving the actual funding. Is that correct?
So, I think we just, why don't we just leave it in and then?
Okay, I'm going to reread the, the resolution. The board approves travels by Directors Rosen, Moore, and Anthony to Seattle, and Directors Constam and Brim Edwards to San Francisco for the vision process learning journey. In addition, Directors Moore and Anthony traveling to the National School Boards Association Conference in Washington DC.
Second?
Okay. That resolution?
Was, was that a motion? Would consider that a motion? I'll second it.
Okay. Resolution five, seven, nine, six has been moved by Director Brim Edwards, seconded by Director Bailey. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any public, well, we don't have any public. Okay. All right, so, we're adding that to the business agenda. So, now, we will vote on the business agenda.
Are we, are we voting to add it to the business agenda and then? Voting on the business agenda?
I would just vote on the resolution.
Okay. Okay. We're now going to vote on resolution five, seven, nine, six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Student Representative Pasler?
Yes.
Resolution five, seven, nine, six passes by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Pasel voting yes. Okay. Now, we're going to vote on the business agenda.
So, Madam Chair, before we get to the business agenda, I'd like to flag a resolution that I'm going to bring to the board next meeting. It's relating to suspending approval of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Portland and Portland Public Schools. Just as background for, about a community of, my thinking here is, as, for those of us who are here on the board meeting on December eleventh, we were presented with the proposition that if we did not approve the intergovernmental agreement, that the City of Portland would defund the school resource officers. And so, I, I think, just speaking for myself, but I think the sentiment was also suggested by other board members that we really felt we hadn't had adequate time to listen to students. But the sort of compressed timeline with our last board meeting, the need to do this, that we were told it was needed to do it before the end of the year. So, we moved ahead, I think, without necessarily feeling like we had had an opportunity to fully listen to what our students wanted to share with us. And so, it's now become clear that the December thirty-first deadline has come and gone and has been communicated to us that it may be several months. So, I'm going to bring a resolution and I'll distribute it to everybody, but essentially, would suspend the proposed cost-sharing agreement provisions in the IGA specifically. And then, also, to allow for potential modifications, suspend the rest of the sections. And that the board would have the option, when it felt it was ready, to move ahead to revoke the two suspensions. But it's really designed to, we, we were hurried into something that turns out it was a false timeline. And this provides us with a timeline for us to act and appropriately engage with our students before we move ahead. So, I'm just going to, I'll share, I'll share the language, but it's not to be moved tonight, but just as a, want to put it forward to give the board the option if they want that in the future.
Okay. Okay, so.
Just want to say, the engagement needs to include staff as well as students.
Great. We can add that.
Okay, we're not going to discuss it tonight. So, the next item is the business agenda. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Director Espaza.
Director Espaza Brown moves. Director Constam seconds. We have no public comment. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, on the flow analytics contract. So, I realize this is part of our ending up with school use programs, boundaries work. It's not clear to me if flow analytics is going to be involved in, to me, the first piece of work is around our focus option schools and around dual-language immersion, alignment, co-location, all those issues. Are, are they part of that work or is that work that we're doing internally? When I look at their website, it looks more like they're GIS, public process around boundaries and school citing, but not around the education piece. So, clarification around that?
We're working with on those processes. It was included in the RFP. When we're balancing the use of all of our facilities for both neighborhood schools and various programs, we need to do that work together. It's not something that you can separate out. It is something that, when you're looking at enrollment counts in programs and enrollment accounts in schools, it, it does work to get best to do that work together.
I, I think also, Deputy Superintendent, haven't they augmented their team with some subcontractors with other areas of expertise that are not apparent on their website?
Well, especially in their, in the RFP, there were additional people. There were communication folks in community process. So, that, we did have three specific people that came and interviewed with us and when we went through the evaluation process. And they were directly from the flow analytics, but they also had additional people in the RFP available as we need them throughout the process. So, it is, I'm waiting for this contract to be approved so that I can have my organizational meeting with them to map out our process. We have had conversation in the interviews, but it is not, we don't have it all mapped out until we get into a face-to-face meeting once the contract is approved.
Okay, well, we have educational decisions to be made about expanding programs or contracting programs. That doesn't seem to be, even if you're talking about more community engagement, yes, that's important, but that, those educational decisions.
So, we would count on our instructional, our disco, our school community and instructional leaders in the district to help us with that work.
Okay, so, that's part of that mapping process. Okay, and we've got a work session coming up on kind of framing that?
It's in February, yes.
Okay.
So, just to read a little bit of the language on, you know, what the comprehensive study includes. I'm reading from the bottom of page six. It is about reviewing, analyzing language immersion, focus option, alternative program placement, pros and cons of whole school versus co-located. So, there's, there is language in here in, in the scope, but I, you know, I know you're looking for some assurances that it's going to be this encompassing, but I, I imagine their process all along is going to need to take in staff input all along the way in these areas.
Yeah, it will, it would be difficult to separate the two pieces out, especially when you're talking about students being in buildings, whether they're separate or together. But in terms of instructional practice, certainly, we'll look to our instructional leaders to help guide that part of the process.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't see that they had the expertise to say, hey, you want two more of these? Or you want, want to just stay where you are? Or, or with the program regardless of where, if it gets moved or whether it's time to pull the plug on that one? And that seems to be a more bigger piece around, around our strategy of what's our portfolio of programs that we're looking for. That's much, much more of a, that we need to inform them that this is the direction we're going in rather than.
So, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm, are they facilitating that? Or are we doing that to focus them on the boundary and, you know, building usage?
So, it, it, nothing is a standalone. It will be an integrated process.
Yeah, I, no, I get, I get that. But there's, there's, there's also what's.
There's instructional decisions that will certainly influence the outcomes of the process.
Okay.
I'm imagining there would be some guiding principles at the onset of this process, right? So, it's clear what we're valuing or looking for. Is it, you know, it, so, the end result or outcome sort of takes those into account? If we want to make a statement about dual-language immersion as a program we believe we want to promote and support, that might be important to say. For example, if we're working to optimize, you know, where those programs are located and whether we're looking to expand them, I, I imagine we're going to need to have some robust conversations about that.
Yeah. And, and I'm just trying to get clear on the skill set that they're bringing, that if that's part of their wheelhouse, great. I didn't, that wasn't readily apparent. If it's not part of their wheelhouse, then we need to make sure that we have the team in place with the timeline feeding into where, where the processes that they are skilled at doing. So, that's, that's what I'm trying to.
I hear you.
Assess that. Okay.
Any further discussion?
I think there wasn't public comment sign up for work session. Can I ask one question? I promise I'll be brief.
Okay.
So, I'm Katie Hargucci. I'm a parent at Alameda Elementary School. And my question is actually specifically about what Dr. Burrow just talked about. And it's the guiding principles and values. So, how and when are those guiding principles and values conversations going to happen? Will there be public involvement? And how will existing district values, specifically the district's racial equity value statement from 2010 be implemented? Because from the proposal and the RFP, it looks like the only opportunity for public comment was on proposed boundary changes, which, from what I'm hearing, sounds like that's going to be rather late in the process. Thank you.
Okay. So, I think this is going to be a, an iterative process, as they say. But, but we have, I'm going to go in the soapbox a little bit. We're, we're finally going to do this thing that we've been talking about doing for, well, I've been talking about doing for ten years. So, I'm, I'm looking, very much looking forward to this. And, and I want to thank all the staff for getting us to where we are today where we can actually imagine doing a full-on examination of the portfolio of schools we have and the programs and, and balancing enrollments so that they're, all of our facilities are used efficiently and effectively and all that good stuff we've been talking about forever.
But I do think it's a fair point that you raised and that you raised, Director Bailey, that we still need to have some opportunity to make sure that the work described in this RFP and the proposal that we're accepting right now does encompass what we hope, everything that we hope to get out of this process, and to the extent that it doesn't, that we're able to clearly articulate what corollary processes are necessary in the district and who's accountable for them and.
What, I mean, it's, it's also worth noting, we're right in the middle of a visioning process. So I imagine a fair number of the values that are going to be guiding this process are going to be surfaced through the visioning process.
Well, and as a member of the core team, I've been trying to have a station at our community gatherings be specifically around what are, what are our core values? Because if we have those core values agreed upon as part of this process, it starts to feed into, okay, now we're doing a boundary process, what are the values that are going to guide us? Again, that's, that's the first step because, you know, once you have your values, then you have, well, which one comes first? But, but at least sets a table for that.
So approving the contract tonight is a first step.
Yeah.
I think while many of us may have been thinking about this and talking about it for a long time, a lot of people in the community have not. And I, this is probably a case in which we can't possibly over-communicate, so, whether it's what the process will be, what the timeline is, our approach in terms of values at the front end of the process, I think will serve us well if we're going to get this over the finish line. And I know you've, Deputy Superintendent Hertz has been part of a boundary process elsewhere. And, you know, a lot of times, the first time somebody's going to engage in it is when they get a postcard from the district, or read about it in the paper, or hear about it from their PTA, or just parents on the playground. So I think we just have to remember that this is going to be a process that's going to need a lot of communication because this is not something that Portland has done very often, or even in sort of.
Or even ever.
At least in our lifetimes, in a, in a large, large-scale way. So I, I think the communication around this is going to be really critical.
So I will also add that there will be, I anticipate this being a multi-year process, the likelihood of us being able to get all of it done in one year is unlikely, especially as we have facilities coming forward in future years. So we will be taking our top priorities in terms of, since the ones that have urgent need in the first year, and then continue as schools come open or are available from leases ending, or because we're refurbishing a school that's currently vacant through bond proceeds. So we'll continue to do the work in multiple, multiple-year tiers.
It's going to be really challenging.
Yes, it won't be, it won't be all at once. So I want to make that, I don't want anyone to have that misunderstanding.
We have some pretty clear ideas where we need to act first.
Quickly, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of the approving the business agenda, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Student Representative Pasler?
Yes.
Business agenda passes by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Pasler voting yes.
Chair Moore?
Yes.
I want to just thank the staff and the Risk Management Office and the Superintendent for providing some flexibility for students. One of the items on the business agenda, you know, sometimes it's important to stick by the rules and also to make sure that our students are safe, and other times when flexibility is warranted, it's good to be flexible. So I want to thank the staff for showing that for the Jefferson Dancers program.
Thank you for bringing that up, yes.
Yeah, we hope to hear a report out when they get back.
Well, yeah.
Okay, do we have any other business? Okay, the, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education is January twenty-ninth, and we are adjourned. Thank you.